We'll call the 25 June meeting of the Manhattan City Commission to order. If you would want, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is a work session oriented on the budget and as always we'll have our CFO Bernie Hand lead off.
Thank you Mayor, Commissioners. You have a busy, busy evening ahead of you and we're on 15 minute schedules. I will do my best. If by chance there's other issues that we need to talk about, I'll be here after all the presentations are made and certainly you could ask those questions at that time. Before I start, there's really two things that I really would like you as a commission to focus on. One of those obviously deals with the mill levy and giving the city manager whatever input you can as to where you want to see us end up. The city manager has made reductions, we're going to go through some of those and we're half of what we started off with early in the budgetary process. The other item isn't on the agenda, but I want to throw it out here nonetheless, and that is your appetite as a commission for raising fees to cover some of the expenses and to give us a little bit of added cushion on revenue to meet those expenses. We don't typically do cost recovery and cost accounting, we are conscious of that. And I can tell you the city manager more so than anyone trying to make sure that any program that we put forward, any effort that we make is covered at least in part by revenue. And I think if you look at the bond and interest fund, notwithstanding the size of the debt, which has come down considerably, we have a bunch of different revenue sources that meet that debt requirement as opposed to strictly ad valorem or property taxes. So, please keep that in mind because that's not something we're going to cover tonight, but I think in the near term or certainly in your discussions with the city manager, that may be something you want to broach. I want to start off, this is a busy chart, but it gives you at least a little bit of a perspective on how far you may want to go to reduce the mill levy. We're a little over two mills right now and if you drop clear down to the bottom and look at two mills, you can see we would have to trim well over a million dollars to basically erase that 2.3 mill levy that we're currently at. That would be difficult because part of that mill levy increase, as we talked about in the second work session, I'll mention it again tonight, is in the bond and interest fund. And another part is in the employee benefit fund, which I'll also touch on just briefly. Here's where we stand currently, as I mentioned, we currently have a mill levy increase of about 2.3 over 2019, this year's mill levy. And I put the general fund out there because you can see what efforts the city manager has taken, I think, and city administration to reduce that levy. So right now, our general fund increase over this year's general fund is about .28, .3 mills higher than this year. If you look at some of the changes, one of the first things that city manager and city administration did was to go back and look at some of the positions that we're looking at for next year and rather than take those out of the general fund, trying to find other revenue sources that will offset those increases in personnel. Some of those come from utilities, I think some are from special street and highway, but they're not intended, they've been removed from the general fund itself, which gives part of that mill levy decrease that we were talking about. Historically, we have always put in a buffer for personnel and that's usually to cover those things that are strictly not anticipated. It could be overtime through a difficult winter, it could be other emergencies, whatever it might be, we've always budgeted basically a percent and a half of our total payroll as a buffer. That amounts to about $214,000 for next year. We didn't budget one this year and we didn't because you may recall, city manager had to make some very difficult decisions in order to get us to the point where we were, so to speak, not in the red. And again, I don't have to remind you that the problem we're going through right now is basically a stagnation of revenues where we're just simply not seeing any major increases. And it's really put a difficulty in trying to move the city forward and plan for the future as well as some of the programs and things that citizens have come to rely on. So, we reduced that personnel buffer by half. Half of it is still there. And towards the end of this presentation, I may go out on a limb and give you some of my ideas on what you as a commission might want to do to reduce that levy further. Here are some other changes we made in the capital improvement program. These items were changed in terms of their funding amounts or in some cases deferred until the future. So those items, roughly nine of those, have been reduced out of the general fund. There are some other reductions that we can make and I might just go ahead and jump ahead a little bit to kind of keep us on track in terms of time. I probably would recommend, and the city manager has already, I think acknowledged this, that we ought to take that additional 107,000 buffer and probably delete that for 2020. We also could delete this delinquency rate. Now that raises, we could delete it entirely or we could reduce it in steps. Now this is for our CPD. What makes us more sensitive is in the past, we never budgeted a delinquency rate for the Riley County Police Department. There were two occasions where we were short, one year 50,000 and I think one year a little under 100,000. And the Riley County Police Department basically stomped their feet and said, "We need to make that up" and we did, out of the general fund. And of course, that puts the general fund in that much more difficulty when you have to make those kinds of transfers that are unexpected. So reducing that delinquency rate by its entirety gives us a big step, over half a mill in reducing the mill levy. But it also puts us in a position where if by chance in 2020, we're short in some respects, and Riley County is short, the police department and their property tax collections, since that is their main source, their only source really of revenue, that and delinquent taxes and motor vehicle taxes, if they're short in property tax collections because of delinquencies in 2020, then we will have to likely make it up. And again, that has happened in the past, so one reason we put that delinquency rate in there, even though it does cause a bump in the mill levy. So, again, something to keep in mind. Yes Mayor?
On, just for clarity here, the 2.32 incorporates those things labeled general fund changes. Is that correct?
They do.
And then the other possible reductions can contribute to those various other reductions that you show on the second page.
Yes, this is one of those where the commission could make a direction or the city manager may simply make that direction and advise you later on, depending on where you want to see that mill levy set as we near more and more towards that publication date. But that 107,000 of that buffer, we took half out, we left half in. Given, I think, what the direction of the city manager and I think the wishes that the commission might be, we'll probably forego that and take that remaining amount out.
So on the RCPD in particular here, if the RCPD executes their budget as written, there will be no delinquency?
Well, the delinquency is in case in 2020, if property taxes did not come in as predicted and that 80% funding that we give RCPD doesn't materialize, that shortfall is expected, at least in the past, to be made up by us. Now, I don't know if the city manager wants to speak to that because it's a sore point, I think both for city manager as well as myself, because in other cases, if the library were short, I can tell you that they would probably just make up the difference through other cuts or other revenues that they might have.
But by statute, at least in FERS, we're supposed to cover that.
Well, that is the inference because it does say you shall levy a property tax to meet that annual budget. You're correct.
And I think there was that one year that we did have to do that. I don't remember if you were on--
There's actually been two years Commissioner, yes.
So I remember that well because Ron came and presented on that aspect of it. So it's a cautionary thing too.
Yes.
So is the term really a shortfall instead of delinquency? I mean, I'm having trouble with the word--
Where it comes from Mayor, this delinquency is put in there in case taxpayers, some taxpayers would not pay their property taxes on a timely basis.
I see, alright.
And those distributions are made by the--
Delinquent property taxes.
Yes, those distributions are made by the county treasurer four times a year and by the end of the last distribution in December, which is usually very small, if that doesn't meet their entire budget, then they do have a shortfall.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's that delinquency.
Yes.
Okay.
There are some other perhaps ways we could do this. If you want to give the city manager direction in terms of percentages on how we could perhaps reduce the levy even more. As an example, commodities have increased roughly 65,000. If a percent of that were to be decreased, city manager would be going back to all departments and asking them to look to see what could make up that 10% decrease, if that's the direction we would go, or contractual services or other charges and reserves, which is kind of an odd area because those are things that awful hard for us to avoid. I did put in there the capital outlay that we currently have and some of that is not the kind of capital outlay that you see in your books. It's the sum of the smaller stuff, computers, those kinds of things that are capital assets, but that nonetheless don't meet the dollar threshold to be part of the five-year program. I also added that other, and I hope I don't confuse, but that we, I'm still very bullish on this idea of establishing a new equipment reserve fund. We simply have to look for the future. And I think even though right now reserves sound rather odd and maybe even a little onerous and even not practical, at some point, we will turn this corner. Commissioner McKee may think longer rather than shorter. I tend to be a little bit bullish. I think it's going to turn at some point and we need to be prepared for when that happens. So this new equipment reserve fund would be funded by utility revenues and would fund that portion, 443,000 of equipment. This is what your tax levy--
Can you say--
Mill levy summary, I'm sorry.
Can you say something more about personal services? What's all in there?
Well, that includes, that includes new positions, some, although many of those have been made revenue neutral. It includes overtime, it includes the cost of living, it includes that step increase, it includes part of an odd payroll structure next year because of that leap year and the timing of when these payrolls occur. So it's a number of different things Mayor that it's there. One of my staff members, Amy Albert in fact, who's back here in the back, she runs this payroll and she does, I think, a very good job of really understanding where all of this is coming from. So it also includes what we anticipate would be the fire union as well.
So if we wanted to find one mill further of decrease, we're looking for 585,000 out of this menu?
If you're looking for, yes, if you're looking for a mill, it would, it would take, if you're not going to go to the delinquency rate, and what I would suggest is the other half of that personnel buffer, those two alone almost equal a mill. So you would have to go to someplace else.
Right.
I'm sorry? Yes, yes. So the mill levy as it stands right now, and you can see that delinquency rate in there, okay, at 318,000. This is what it looks like and of course, that property tax increase stands at 1.8 million. I probably confused you somewhat in my memo, but remember, a little over 500,000 of that are new additions to property and market changes, neither of which really are attributed, they're brand new. And so those changes that take place, the actual tax increase is about 1.3 million, taking away those new improvements and the taxes that we would get and generate off of those new improvements. The bond and interest fund, I think you saw this back in the second work session, this is what's happening. And quite honestly Commissioners, as the city manager well knows, so many of our funds were decreasing cash and that is to be expected because the only other recourse is to either raise property taxes or to find a new funding source of revenue. And that speaks to those fee increases that I mentioned earlier and whether or not this commission has an appetite to see some of those fee increases take place. So it's the principal and interest that is going up, cash is going down, and that is what's causing a one-mill increase in the bond and interest fund. You have a similar situation in the employee benefit fund. While the benefit cost has not been especially high and that one big lump up from '16 to 2017, that's because of the health benefits that we moved over to the employee benefit fund from the general fund and we followed property or sales taxes with that, so there was no property tax impact at all. And we've left those sales taxes there to offset that health, new health cost item in the employee benefit fund. But again, if you, I guess the reason I really wanted to show you this, I can tell you, having looked back, part of this increase is CAPERS. And I can tell you Commissioners, that speaks directly to the state of Kansas not living up to their obligation and funding that retirement system the way they should. We as a city and every other city and county across the state that's part of CAPERS, and almost all of them are, they have no choice but to meet the funding requirements that CAPERS puts down to local jurisdictions. And it's just a sore point with me that the state of Kansas doesn't turn around and do the same thing on themselves. But it is what it is.
Numbers on the left or right of these two charts, so--
No, I don't.
Give us some kind of sense of--
No, it's just graphical and you can look at that obviously in the budget book under the employee benefit fund and you can see those numbers. Really what I was interested, most interested for you to see is what's happened with cash, both in the bond and interest fund as well as the employee benefit fund, simply flat. And that is the red flag, at least for me, as we look at so many of these funds, these two, bond and interest and employee benefits, just as an example. And with that Commissioners, I'm ready to move on, if you are, to our presentations.
I do have a question Bernie.
Yes, please.
About, you suggested that if there are any new possibility of revenue, and every once in a while, the administration comes to us with a proposal to raise rates. And the one, and I don't have any that I'm looking at, but I know that sometimes, it's been 10 years since we raised this rate. And I'd be interested in you bringing back in two weeks when we meet again, some of those that are historic, that have not historically been raised.
Sure.
So that they're just stagnant back there. And I know it's easy to overlook, unless you're looking, so maybe that would be a piece of the picture.
Be happy to Commissioner.
I have two quick questions. One, the first few slides that were general fund changes, on those capital improvements, were those ones entirely eliminated from the general fund or just the cost of them reduced?
Some were eliminated, but most were offset by different revenue sources.
Okay, so when you put like citywide document scanning, like that .064, that hasn't been eliminated from capital improvements, we're not doing it or?
So that particular one, we're going to lease purchase instead of an outright. So most of those were switching to a lease purchase component as opposed to paying cash. Some of them were deferred back. We'll clarify that for next time.
Yeah, can you do it on all of them?
Yep.
Thank you. And then last, the delinquency rates, I would just ask the next time that we meet, just a little bit more explanation around that. I don't think I was on the commission the last time that that happened, so--
Yeah, you would.
I just want to understand like how big was the amount that we paid things like that? So I would be interested in hearing more on that.
Be glad to.
Okay, I think one of my questions is, you know, we are losing out on two major events this year, the Symphony on the Flint Hills and the Stampede. And I know, you know, we usually don't get the taxes shown, we don't know what the revenue source, how much we collected until a month or two later, but if you can project what that might be to our community or when we discuss our budget, because that's going to have an impact on 2020 decisions.
You know Commissioner, I actually, and I think I did this with the Mercury, did look at it and I went back over 10 years and looked at the month before June and the month after June to get a sense for what June itself looked like. And over a 10-year period, May was about 558,000 on average for sales taxes, June was 561,000, and July, which is always lower, was about 535,000 or so. So there's a little bit of a bump and we do know anecdotally that there are some store, I could tell you Walmart will simply suffer somewhat by Stampede not being here this year.
But you said 10 years, right?
Yes.
But the Stampede's been here for 20 some odd years.
Yes, no, but I just looked at 10.
So this is one of the few years it won't be here.
Yes.
So I wanted to know what that might look, it might be $100,000 less or $200,000.
It could be, I don't think it will. I think we will probably see a dip, but I don't think it'll be, if the past history from 2018 back 10 years is any indicator, it's not going to be that much different from the preceding month of May.
From the month to month. I understand what you're saying, but in the month of May, we also had graduations and all of these other things going on.
Sure.
So I just want to see what that looks like--
Sure.
Because I'm sure we lost some in the hotels and transient guest tax or other areas. Just for my information, I would like to see those numbers.
Sure, we won't get those numbers of course until August unfortunately, because we're always two months behind, but yes, we certainly will.
Maybe CVB might have something. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're going to have to do here that we haven't done yet, but we have to do it sooner than later, and that is show the specifics of how we get, let's say, a one-mill reduction. So that, you know, the city manager and the staff have an opportunity to go through those priorities and say, on some of these, like the runway lights, I don't know what the impact is. It sounds like it's not good, but I don't know if it's deferred or if we're doing it in another way. So, you know, when we do those, that rack, we need to be able to see what the real inference is of the loss, so. But I would like to start off, I don't know how everybody feels, but I like to start off with a look at a one-mill, 585,000 from where we are today, just to know what it is, whether it's five trucks or something.
Mayor, that's very helpful and I can tell you that knowing what city manager has to weigh in terms of all of the issues, it gives him a lot of variations and flexibilities to find those things that will hopefully have the least amount of impact.
Of course I would support that, but I'm for driving this thing all the way down because we've asked the taxpayers to raise the sales tax for the November ballot. And that's what I said when we voted on that that night, that, you know, this thing has to be looked at hard. Now from what you presented, you know, I can see half a mill, .589, just get rid of that personnel buffer and take that RCPD delinquency rate down to 79,000 because that was, and we had a 50,000, 100,000 shortfall, so that sort of splits it. That's a safe bet, don't eliminate it altogether, but just go with that. There is a little bit over half a mill right there.
I would agree. And me and Commissioner Butler agree, that should be noted. One, I think one mill's a good start, but I want to, I want to understand what it would look like at zero. It doesn't necessarily mean I refuse to vote any higher than zero, but I want a good understanding of what the difference between zero and one is.
I think that we did buy into the third of a cent sales tax that will be on the ballot. And to remove those high-cost items from the city budget, which should allow us to have some operating money that we would have, could have been committed to do other things. If it doesn't pass, that'll be a game changer too with regard to funding the levy for instance, that's going to cost $10 million. So we can't, we just don't have anything like that in our budget, so we're going to be dependent upon that sales tax. I would like to get under two mills and I'm not driving it to zero, I'm more in the one and a half, something like that zone to, to, I want to be reasonable. My electric bill has gone up a whole lot more than we're talking about tonight. Everything I do has gone up and I know that the costs of city government go up. But with that sales tax, I think that we can really try to keep our mill levy down.
The other thing I think we all have to be mindful of, we had this meeting, intergovernmental meeting the other day, and so the county is going to be at 2.1, 2.12 or something. And we went through our budget showing the current about 2.32. USD 383 is going to be 7.8 for six more, for six years, starting this year. So when you looked at, I think it was 148.5 mill rate total for, if you're a taxpayer in the county here at the city, you know, that's a boost of 10 mills across the board. So that's for most people's a lot of impact and trying to be mindful of that, I think is where we're coming from. And it doesn't mean we have to bear the whole burden, but you know, that's going to be quite something for most of our property owners, so we just do the best we can.
Thank you Mayor, Commissioners. We will, we'll come back, I'm sure the city manager will start that process right away and thank you very much.
One second Bernie. Yeah, I just wanted to say, throughout all of this, Kansas State University is still making budget cuts, so they're going to be cutting their budget 4% more than, in addition to the past budget cuts they've given. And this is the first year that they're giving salary increases because of a mandate from the state. So considering that, I think it's good for us to be cautious in increasing the mill levy, not just because of USD 383 and all the other agencies, but our revenue is not picking up. And though we say we keep investing and we're growing and growing and growing, we should be collecting more and more and more. So I think at least for the next year or two, we need to keep it as low as possible. And I would rather concentrate mostly on our personnel and maybe even shuffle some of those funds around. I'm also not sure what I want to do with the RCPD delinquency fund because of what happened in the past and we had to pick that up. Even though we suggested they use the emergency funds that RCP had, there were some stipulations attached to that at the same time. So without those two, as far as the CIPs, and I don't mind going through the budget book myself also and looking through some of those, because I know when you give it to your leadership, they're going to make, make it seem very severe because they need the money. But I think there are some things we can actually look at because you provided those books for us and the documents for us. And look at it closely and see where we can snip and cut here, a little bit in there, a little bit in there, and maybe add it up to a little bit more. But this year, we're not going to collect a whole lot of revenue and I don't want to keep building on that. And I am thinking that the sales tax initiative is going to go for projects, it's not-- initiative is gonna go for projects. It's not as a buffer for any of these things that we're talking about right now. And so I just, uh, these are two different issues. Sales tax has nothing to do with what we're discussing for the budget right now, so I wanna keep that clear also.
I wanna make one comment, though. Well, if you keep a mil levy at zero, you still have an increased budget, because the value of the mil keeps going up. So the, so the budget's still increasing, even with a zero mil levy. And, and, and I beg to differ, the sales tax is tied to the budget, because what do we do? Sixty percent of the budget is sales tax anyway. So you can't separate the two. And, and if the voters don't support that sales tax, there gonna be some serious slashing of budget next year, and so we've, we've gotta put the brakes on this thing. And, and a zero mil levy goal doesn't mean you're decreasing the budget or keeping it flat. It just keeps growing.
Thank you, Commissioners. Pardon?
Let's see, you have what you need?
Oh, I have everything I need. Yes, Mayor, thanks.
All right.
Okay, I think, uh, Sarah Barrett is with the, the Social Services Advisory Board is up first. Sarah, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, if you haven't noticed, I am not John Ball, who stood before you for many years, um, to present on behalf of the Social Services Advisory Board. Uh, my name is Sarah Barrett, and I have the honor to serve as chair. Um, I serve alongside many, um, different gifted individuals, many of whom are available and here with us this evening. You all can stand up if you'd like, acknowledge yourselves, the hard work that you do. Um, and I also want to publicly acknowledge some of our members who will be, um, leaving the board, and thank them for their service. Uh, we'll have three members that will be leaving at the end of this term. Um, tonight, I'd like to discuss with you, um, not only the conditions impacting our agencies, but, uh, the core services that our social service agencies are providing to our community, and the trends and needs that we've identified moving forward. Um, just a few different things to bring to your attention related to the allocation process for 2020. In February, we published our application notice. Um, in April, we conducted our site visits to ensure compliance and have the opportunity to speak with our agencies. And then in May, we were able to meet as a board to deliberate on our allocation recommendations. A few different items for note related to our agencies, um, are some things related to our lack of mid-range and living rate, living wage opportunities, the high cost of living and food tax, scarcity of affordable daycare, heavy competition for low-wage jobs, a lack of affordable and diversified mental health services, a reduction of federal and state funding, um, public transportation, which is up and coming in our, um, beautiful city, and then decreasing population coupled with increasing needs. So these are some of the conditions in which our, our social services are, um, operating within, um, and for many of which, there's an underappreciated need, um, throughout the community. So not just, um, among the folks that are, um, utilizing the services or might need to utilize the services, but within the community itself. So most Manhattan residents don't realize the work that's being done every day. Um, there's a widespread lack of awareness, not only of the agencies themselves, but also the individuals that are utilizing these programs. Um, many of our residents reside in micro-communities in which they limit their interactions on some level to those with similar economic, political, religious, and racial backgrounds. And there's a pervasive perception related to Manhattan. Um, there, Manhattan has been identified as one of the best places to live in the nation, um, and I think we all enjoy living here. Um, and, you know, I think while there is some element of things being very shiny and, and purple here, um, we do have challenges as a community, um, of which that need to be addressed. So as we move forward, I'm thinking about ways that we can fill in the gaps while our agencies provide indisputable services, including things, um, like safe shelter, rapid rehousing, confidential and safe protection for those experiencing gender-based abuse, home care assistance. Um, our agencies do not, um, actually function in a bubble. And so for many of them, even with their, um, collaboration, they're still maintaining somewhat of a, a fragile existence. So many of our agencies work to meet the ever-increasing need, uh, but there's more to be done. So, you know, discussions related to a one-stop-shop and, um, allowing our resources to be less fragmented throughout the, the community itself. And while competent and empathetic, our, our leaders can't do it all. And so many of our directors and, and folks working within the agencies, um, are, are really stretched to the limit and are dependent on volunteers, and often don't have benefits, um, that many of us enjoy as well. So, um, next, I'd like to go through our funding requests, um, given some of the conditions that we've identified, and, uh, review our core services, um, so that we can, um, discuss some of that recommendations related to funding moving forward. Um, so as you've seen in the past, we've identified agencies under two different umbrellas, those related to emergency services, and then those related to our critical and prevention and intervention services. This is an allocation summary of the past few years. Uh, you can see, over time, some of our agencies have remained pretty stable, um, related to the amount that they've requested. We've seen a few different, uh, increases, some, somewhat significant, related to, um, funding and, um, also lack of resources from other agencies. Um, but for the most part, our agencies have maintained, um, an operating budget within, um, within the guidelines provided, and, and also, um, utilize the funds by the, the city in an appropriate way. So the emergency service recommendations relate to the Crisis Center, the Kansas Legal Services, Manhattan Emergency Shelter, Shepherd's Crossing, and Sunflower CASA. Um, here are a couple different items related to our core services, um, provided by the agency. Um, so within, um, the Crisis Center, obviously, they provide, uh, a very important, uh, resource for our, uh, community members. Um, one thing to highlight, last year, our staff answered two thousand five hundred thirteen calls to the crisis hotline, and were dispatched by Riley, Riley County Police Department to eight hundred and thirty-four domestic violence scenes. I pause after that because I think that's a significant number and something that needs to be addressed. Um, we had over eight hundred SSAB clients served, and over twelve thousand hours committed to those services provided through our, um, city funding. For Kansas Legal Services, this is obviously a service that, um, is unlike any other service that our, uh, social service agencies provide. Um, for, um, many individuals, uh, equal justice under the law is not realized because of lack of, um, funding, and they don't have the same type of access to our justice system. And so in providing that litigation support, um, they're able to, they're able to see disob- disability payments, child and special support, and guardianship, um, come back to our clients directly. Um, so last year, they served a hundred and thirty-two SSAB clients, um, for about a hun- seven hundred and thirty-eight hours. But one thing of note, um, they've actually allocated a monetary, um, a monetary value to the, um, to the work that they've done, and, and they've seen, um, over, or close to two hundred thousand dollars of monetary benefits obtained for clients, so coming back to our clients. Um, and they routinely receive referrals from the Crisis Center, our local court system, and, and the Northeast Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. Uh, next, we have the Manhattan Emergency Shelter. Um, MECSI functions as a twenty-four-hour resource and referral facility. Um, it's heavily used by Riley County Police Department, Ascension Via Christi, and other emergency services, um, in providing their transitional shelter, supportive housing, and living stabil- stabilization services for many of the individuals within our, uh, community that often find themselves without ongoing housing. This is really, um, that core service that, um, cannot be disputed for, uh, many of our, our residents here that have lost their, their stable housing. And they served about two hundred and thirty-two SSAB clients last year. Um, they did ask for a pretty significant increase, um, and part of that was in part due to some of the funding, um, through the federal government, through HUD, um, that they ended up losing, um, just because of things happening at the federal level. And so, um, trying to realize that through other grants, which often require matching or other resources, um, they are able to, um, make up most of that, but did, did ask for an increase in, um, their allocation this year.
What are the charts that, uh, we used last year had all the various funding sources available? And I know, um, you probably didn't have this available when you're doing your deliberations, but, for example, many of these organizations are supported by other government agencies, SSAB, the Special Alcohol, CDBG, uh, fundraising, and so on. And as an example, the Manhattan Shelter last year had nine hundred thousand dollars worth of total revenue. And what this does for the commission is allow us to put things in perspective. And did you have that kind of information available as you're going through your deliberations?
Yes.
The total, all these funding sources, so you knew the impact if somebody only had two hundred thousand, or if they had twelve million, for example?
Mm-hmm. Yes, as part of the application process, our agencies are required to provide that information related to the additional funding sources. And we also discuss that as part of our site visits, and that's in, um, actually where some of this information surfaced, um, in that site visit, understanding what that impact would look like from that loss of allocation through the HUD.
Good, thanks.
Um, for Shepherd's Crossing, um, obviously, they provide rent and utility assistance for low-income residents. Um, each year, they identify about a hundred and fifty-plus clients registered with DCF, um, to provide stability, employment, and reduce homelessness. Given the state of, um, our current, uh, DCF, um, processes, I, I think it's important for us to continue to support, um, not only Shepherd's Crossing, but the work that they're doing to help, uh, bridge that gap for many of our, our families that are utilizing services through DCF. Uh, they saw about four hundred and sixty-eight clients last year, um, for just over three thousand services, or three thousand service hours. Um, next up, we have Sunflower CASA, um, so providing, um, advocacy on behalf of many of our, uh, children within the community that have experienced some type of child abuse, neglect, truancy, substance abuse, or divorce within their household. Um, one thing of note related to our, uh, CASA advocate position, they actually served children throughout the entire state. Um, our advocates are driving for, um, actually thousands of miles over the last year. So, um, for the victim advocate position, they served five hundred and fifty-five hours and drove over, or close to twelve thousand miles. Um, and similar for the advocate supervisor position, uh, just over five hundred, or five hundred and fifty hours and drove, uh, just over nine thousand miles. Um, you think about what that looks like for some of these individuals. They might be going to visit, uh, children in Colby, Kansas, and Hutchinson, um, very far away from our general vicinity, and so, um, making sure that they provide that service for the children, uh, but also what that impact looks like for them as, as a, uh, employee of the, the program itself. Uh, there's definitely a need there, um, but knowing that this is a perfect example, some of those folks who are going above and beyond. Uh, they served just over one hundred clients for, um, eighteen hundred hours last year. As we move through our critical service recommendations, we have Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Home Care Hospice, KSU Center for Child Development, Morning Star, um, CRO and Thrive, Manhattan. Um, so Big Brothers, Big Sisters, uh, their core services, matching youth, um, experiencing adversity with adult mentors. Um, unlike many of the other Big Brothers, Big Sisters offices, our Manhattan office actually provides services for youth five through twenty-five years old. I think that's something of note, knowing that for many of our, uh, youth that might be aging out of the foster care system, or just may not have that stable, um, family home, um, it's important for them to have that direct mentor or, um, direct, um, adult that's available and encouraging them, um, providing opportunities as they move into the development of adulthood. Um, they served thirty-seven clients last year, uh, for just over thirteen hundred hours. Um, they did request, um, just over, or thirty-seven thousand dollars, and we recommended, uh, a slight decrease in that, um, allocation for them this year. Boys and Girls Club of Manhattan, obviously, providing a safe and positive after-school programming, um, and, you know, as part of that process, uh, hopefully mitigating latchkey issues for many students or many children. Um, they have a new positive action program, which promotes intrinsic cooperation by reinforcing the philosophy, "You feel good when you do good." So really encouraging that positive impact, not only, um, within their peer group, but, um, throughout their world. Uh, they saw four hundred and ninety, um, SSAB clients that were served last year, and, uh, their allocation was pretty, um, can, their allocation recommendation was actually slightly higher from their previous ones. They'd been previously pretty consistent over the years, um, but saw, um, or requested a, a little bit of an increase this last year.
Big Sister, and then increased Boys and Girls Clubs, that just raised an immediate question, what, what, what's changed?
Yeah, there was a lot of transition staff-wise, um, for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Um, and, and in that transition, I think we saw less folks being matched than we would prefer than they had, uh, previously, um, identified in their outlook as part of their goals. And so recognizing that, um, within that transition, hopefully, uh, this next year, they'll be able to get back in track. Um, knowing that we only have so much to allocate, uh, this felt like this could be, um, an area in which we could still show our support and support the program itself, but also put some of the onus back on the program itself to, uh, put themselves in a position for success moving forward.
So, uh, presumably, if conditions change, this might reverse next year, is that...
I would hope so, yeah.
But I mean by reverse, you'd have to find the compensation from somewhere else, right?
So for Home Care and Hospice, um, providing personal care and homemaking service, uh, to those with disabilities, uh, the majority of those receiving the care are often identified as the freest in our community and most vulnerable. Um, so individuals over the age of seventy-five, those living alone, and then individuals with multiple health, uh, problems. Um, so last year, they were able to serve one hundred and twenty-three clients, um, for just over three thousand hours. Uh, their funding, um, allocation has been pretty consistent over the last year. Um, and they continue to serve a need, uh, for our community in which, where for many years, we've advertised and essentially coined the, um, idea that many folks should move to Manhattan for retirement, or, or think about, you know, Manhattan for their, um, their next chapter in life, but also ensuring that we have those resources available to them is, um, definitely something we want to consider and maintain as far as funding. The K-State Center for Child Development, um, Affordable, Accessible, High-Quality Child Care, um, they have quality early learning programs, and the funding provides about thirty to forty percent subsidy for those qualifying families across older age groups, and a fifty percent subsidies for the infant group. Um, they served twenty-five SSAB clients last year for just over a sixty-five hundred hours, and their, um, actual allocation, um, consideration has been pretty consistent over the last few years. Morning Star, CRO, um, they continue to, uh, function with their peer-to-peer support for those identifying with mental illness through rehabilitation and recovery. Um, they really strive to empower individuals to break through some of that stigma that still exists within our society, and, and doing so, um, hopefully decreasing isolation, incarcerations, and hospitalizations. Um, they've seen some pretty tenuous funding and office space concerns over the last few years, but they continue to cultivate an environment where members experience a sense of, um, belonging within not only their peer groups, but also our community, and, um, hopefully continue to live a, a healthy lifestyle. They served one hundred and fifty-five clients last year, and their, uh, funding request has been pretty consistent as well. And then lastly, Thrive, um, really, um, establishing a program, um, that embodies the Walk With Me approach as individuals, um, work to alleviate generational poverty. Um, so building skills, relationships, strengthening our families, uh, which is definitely something core to our community itself, and then facilitating those relationships to build social capital and to really empower individuals as they move, uh, towards prosperity. And so, uh, just some of the numbers that they provided on a five-point scale, um, many members identified, uh, improvements, not only in their financial stability, uh, their relationship, but then also in their persistence and motivation, which we know it takes oftentimes, um, when moving out of, um, ongoing poverty, that persistence and motivate, motivation. They were able to serve forty-seven clients last year, uh, for around twenty-four hundred hours, and their allocation request has remained consistent as well. So this is a historical snapshot of our approved funding over the last few years. Uh, you can see over twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, um, and really into twenty sixteen, it was fairly consistent, and then we had a bit of a bump for twenty seventeen, uh, then twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, uh, somewhat of a bump, and then now going into twenty twenty. So future trends that we've seen, um, there continues to be less state and local funding available for our agencies. There's high competition for the existing grants that exist, an increased need for fundraising. There's also changing demographics within our community, uh, which also brings about demand for services. Um, you know, one of our agencies even said, you know, You know, one of our agencies even said, you know, there was a family that moved here, and, you know, they actually had a really good experience, and they found the resources that they needed, and they encouraged other family members to move to Manhattan. And so, you know, knowing that folks are finding the life that they're looking for here, but with some of that change in demographics, we might see an additional need for services. And then also acknowledging that emergency services will increase if our critical services are not supported, and we continue to see the same ongoing trend. So mental health, childcare, and higher-wage employment with benefits as necessary. Some additional catalysts for change that we've identified, so the need for additional foster families, more volunteers assisting with agencies and programs, so promotion of different networks such as the Flint Hills Volunteer Center, contributions to our utility donation program, and then support for various area fundraisers. So we know that there's an indelible impact of our social service agencies. There's a, our strong social service agencies continue to be integral to individual and community well-being, and our strong social service agencies contribute to the quality of life for thousands of residents facing adversity, and our SSAB funds create a ripple effect that will undoubtedly benefit the overall community. And with that, that's my presentation, and I would accept any questions that you may have.
I have a question, Sarah, and then a quick statement. On the question, I read in your, it's okay if you don't remember this, but I read in y'all's minutes, I think it was maybe a couple of months ago, you had a discussion at an SSAB meeting regarding our discussion that we had in February regarding the funding, and about how that would affect your decision on this vote. Can you speak a little bit about what your board thought about that conversation?
Yep, so that was, we actually reviewed the last work session in which I attended, and discussed some of the conditions that I think our board has operated under for different years, not necessarily an explicit message, but more so an implicit message, not necessarily knowing how much leeway we have, not necessarily having a budget to work within, and so feeling like we accept our charge and want to do our due diligence to ensure that our agencies are utilizing services, or the city funds, in a way that's appropriate and what they've asked for, but also recognizing that many of them have not asked for those additional increases over years, for fear that they may not receive the number that they've asked for, or even less. And so we discussed what that might look like if we actually had conversations with our agencies, not just to discuss their application and to ensure compliance with what they've asked for, but to really get a comprehensive picture of their true need if they were able to be fully funded.
All right, okay. And then my general statement, I'm gonna step on my soapbox here for just a second. Before I was on the City Commission, I served on the SSAB board. And when I was on the board, we talked a lot about the cuts that were coming down from the state and federal government, how much pressure that was putting on our agencies while the need was increasing. And I just want to point that out, that like, don't gloss over that fact. We don't talk about this issue a lot on the state and federal level, because it's not the sexy issues that come up for them a lot. But what happens is those agencies have to make cuts internally, and then they have to come to cities to ask for the money to make that up. And cities heavily rely on regressive tax models that only exacerbate these problems. So just again, think about those things. For some reason, agency municipalities like the state of Kansas that have decided that it makes more sense for me and Charles Koch to be the same income tax bracket, instead of setting up a progressive tax model like they could to help fund these shortfalls. But instead, again, we rely on regressive tax models to make those up. So don't gloss over those facts, and make sure that when you see conversations like that happening on the state and federal level, they have consequences here in the city of Manhattan, and we're the ones that have to deal with the problems that originate from those consequences. So that's why these agencies are important, and making sure we're taking care of these agencies is important.
Thank you.
Just wanted to ask about the utility donation thing. You know, last year, there was just a mere 23,000, which I'm disappointed in, but there's no numbers for this year on the charts. How's that working?
Yep, so I think right now, we're still waiting to see what that will look like. But really, part of that is also some of that lack of awareness. Many folks have moved to, you know, recurring payments, or maybe they don't go to the website as often, so they may not see that notification to say, "Hey, you can sign up for this." And so rethinking, you know, maybe is that a website shift? Is that a different way of pushing out some of that messaging? So folks can not only become aware, but have an understanding as far as what that money is going to. So if we say, you know, the utility program, a lot of folks don't necessarily understand that that's helping to support our service agencies.
So the money you are getting, though, from that, are you gonna continue to, I think, in past years, you used it for like a capital improvement program?
Yep.
To fill in some voids that they can't use this money for?
Yes, exactly.
Is that still the plan to target that?
Yep, that continues to be the plan.
And for those of you out there listening, the utility donation program is, you can add money to your water bill. And then my goal had always been that if everybody would just add $1 to their water bill for every water meter in this town, and you'd be looking at six figures, easy. And, you know, as Commissioner McKee says, you know, we got taxes trying to support this, and if people are really serious about supporting it, you know, that's a whole lot less than that Starbucks you buy every day. You know, $1 on your water bill a month, and it would make a huge difference. And 100% of that donation, because it's collected by the Water Department Finance Office, would go directly to you. And, you know, I've supported that program for years. I advocated it, you know, many years ago, and I think that's something, we gotta just do a better job of selling, and get people to sign up, you know, to support that.
I agree.
Sarah, I wanted to ask about the impact of last year's Labor Day flood on the different social services, and what you picked up from their reporting, because that was an anomaly. We had people out of their homes from, I mean, some of them just returned at one of the apartment buildings not that long ago. So maybe you have some anecdotal information?
Yeah, that displacement was very difficult for a lot of our residents, and I think we've seen that not only in places that we would expect it, like the emergency shelter, but in additional places like Shepherd's Crossing, or, you know, even, I'm trying to think of another one, you know. But really, I think many of our agencies, it's part of that ripple effect, just like our monies have a ripple effect for positive change. Whenever something like that happens within our community, there's a ripple effect, not only within the agencies, but those individuals utilizing the agencies. And so for many of them, they had costs and different bills that they were not expecting. And we know that for many Americans, you know, an emergency of $500 cannot be covered because they don't have those emergency funds available to them. So generally, it was more anecdotal, just increased utilization, but I think that was folded into just the increase in utilization overall. And so the more that we can support these agencies, knowing that some of these anomalies will continue to happen, and have that buffer so that there's staffing there, that they are fully funded, and that they can provide those services when things like that come up, I think is really important to consider.
My concern is that it could happen again at any time, and our agencies are who we depend on, and some others too, that are charitable, but it's, somebody has to be at the ready to be able to help and know where all the resources are, and be, fill in that gap. I did recently tour two of your agencies. One was the Sunflower Casa out on West Anderson, and the Manhattan Emergency Shelter. And I was especially concerned about, you know, and interested in the shelter because it was closed for some months last year, and I was really concerned about that. And so that they're back in operation, and I'm glad to know that. But these are agencies that come to the rescue when our citizens, some of them do not have another, have a place to live because of a disaster, or because of some, you know, emergency kind of a situation. So I am supportive of a basic level of support for the agencies, as I see that we have done in the past. I think it's just essential.
Thank you.
I do want to thank your entire committee. I think all of you put in a lot of time and effort when you make those visits and go through each of the grants, and these are difficult times for everybody. Previously, before my time, I think there was more than 10 organizations requesting money, and it was more than 400,000 some odd, but we have now. So the requests, I don't want to say the needs have decreased, but what we are giving has decreased. In fact, the needs have actually increased. And the populations these impact the most are women and children. And that's why people end up making bad decisions, whether it's domestic violence, or whatever it might be, because they don't have the resources, or they might be incarcerated for a longer period of time because they don't have legal services. So it ends up falling on certain populations. And in general way, the institutionalized organizations feel like they're responsible for this type of behavior, and actually, it's not that case at all. I do worry about the legal, Kansas legal services, because I think we do depend on them quite a bit, and there's a lot of people that don't even know they exist that need it. I know during the Labor Day flood, I had to send some people to legal services because they didn't know that it even existed, and they said, "I don't have the money." And I said, "Well, there's this resource that we have." That's just too, so there's so many that don't even know about it. So fundamentally, I think, you know, we have to make a shift in the way we think we are responsible for everyone in Manhattan. And if you look at V.A.C., if you look at Gary County Hospital, they had to reduce their staff. We are not going to be in a better situation anytime soon. We already have staffing issues. Mental health is the same thing. We can blame a whole variety of issues, but this falls on us. As representatives for all of the residents that live in Manhattan, we need to make sure they're all being taken care of. And I think the recommendations you've made tonight are adequate, and hopefully, we can give them, give them a little bit of what they need. It's not going to solve their problem. And for anybody to think that people want to be in these situations or want to be victims are very, very wrong. They would rather not be in this situation. So I think that those are discussions to have in the future, but as we discuss the budget, I'm sure we're gonna have more discussions about it. Thank you, Sarah, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna just make one of the comment on your historical approved funding chart. I like the way you did that, because you basically just compared 2014 to 2019 with the existing agencies that you have. And that's well done, because if you go back farther than that, it gets, it looks strange. It looks like we allocated more money, but that was back in the days when you had ATA competing with your agencies. You had University for Man competing with your agencies. And so if you go back and dig through that, what happened was, we had a number of things in there that never should have been under SSAB, in my opinion, and they were taken out, and that caused the budget to drop, but it also changed the competitive factor on who you had to allocate to. And so I think the current list of agencies we have is more in line with what this policy was supposed to do. And then still, if you back up and look at big picture, between tax dollars, and this is about a .85 mil impact on this budget, which is not too bad, I always thought it should be under a mil, and then if you add everything else, community block grants, the special alcohol fund, which comes from a different tax, the city of Manhattan's invested every year well over $1 million in supporting those agencies, and I'm not sure it gets much better than that. Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
I'll just add my thanks to all the hard work that you have to do. This is always a worrying time, I think, for the commission. I think that one chart shows that we have, in fact, increased year over year. And just to be specific on this year, the special alcohol went down 5,000, and CDBG went down about 25,000. The city went up 30, so that kind of holds that in check, but it didn't increase anything. And then the other thing that I always worry about is, and you discussed this earlier, but just if you looked at the Boys and Girls Clubs, for example, that's got about $1,008 total. And then if you look at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that's around 400,000. So the impact of those changes, particularly to the little one, is much more significant. But I know you've studied it, so I appreciate you doing that. The thing I perhaps would ask you to do for next year, I think, and this gets at two things, but if you looked at those blocks, which are very helpful, that is, the impacts of what's happened this year, perhaps if you made two or three years in a row?
Okay.
So that you could see the number served went up, or kind of what the impact is. And then if, the other thing you could show is if you've run into a ceiling. In other words, if we gave $60,000, or the total, let's say, is $400,000 that went into that particular entity, and that was as much as you could do, then we need to know why you hit the stop, because as Commissioner Reddy said, there's a lot of people out there that need help, but we may have hit our ability to serve, even though there's more waiting, so.
Excellent, thank you. I will make that note and have that available for next year.
Sarah, I fail to thank you and your committee. I know that you have all spent hours and hours, and there's no amount of money that we could ever come up with to compensate for the work you do. So thank you, all of you.
Thank you. It is our pleasure.
Now, special, oh, you're gonna do it, Bernie? You're gonna do the charts?
No, I'm just...
Special Alcohol Committee?
I think we have Jourdain Coleman here.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're right behind me.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you guys know that it is me, I just got a haircut. But it's me. Not a doppelganger.
Okay, it's your summer haircut, right?
Yeah.
Cool, it's cooler.
So I'm coming before you tonight as representative and chair of the Special Alcohol Fund Advisory Board. We are a very diverse group of people. We have attorneys, we have mental health professionals, we have business owners in the community, and we have some folks who just have an interest in giving back. And so it's always great when we have our meetings, because we get such a diversity of opinions and ideas about how things should go. So for those of you that don't know, the Special Alcohol Fund is one-third of a bigger liquor tax, and that comes from specific entities for alcohol, so caterers, anybody who has to get a liquor license to have alcohol at an event. It doesn't come from liquor stores, and something else, it doesn't come from grocery stores. That's something that our committee has talked a lot about this past year, is with the addition of full-strength alcohol in stores, we're probably gonna continue to see a decrease in funding. And so that's just something that we even need to figure out how to lobby for at the state level to make that change, or just adjust as we look at our allocations in the We really wanted this year to figure out what was our priority as a committee, and we felt like we wanted to focus on prevention. We thought that looking more to support the programs that focus on helping kids and adults kind of just to not even enter into drug and alcohol use in the first place. And so you can see 49% of our funding is towards prevention programs this year. As I mentioned, we did have a decrease in funding. If we would have funded all the requests we received this year total, we would have had a $217,000 deficit. And so Sarah did a great job in just explaining that our organizations have lots of need, and we don't have the available funds to support them in the way that we would like to. So I'm gonna try to go over maybe some of the groups that you didn't hear about, and just kind of fly through some of the ones that you did hear about. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, if you look in that first column, it shows you this year's recommendations. So the request was 19,000, and we recommended 16,000, and that's a group that was 100% focused on prevention. Boys and Girls Club, which you guys heard about, requested $30,368, and we recommended Friends of Recovery is a group that we haven't heard about. So this group focuses on sober living houses for individuals. We chose to decrease this group's funding from last year's funding, and that was because they've had some goals that they haven't met. So there's been, the last few years, we've been hoping for a second Oxford House, and we haven't seen that come to fruition, and so that was why we chose to fund this particular agency less. KSU AODs, so this is the University Counseling Services, formerly University Counseling Services Program. It's now moved into LeFeyne Health Center. And so their requested funding was $97,000, and our recommend it was 18,000. And... And even though that's such a huge disparity, it is an increase in funding from what we allocated last year. And so we recognize the impact that K-State has on the community as far as the number of people that they can serve. And while we don't have the funds available to match what they requested, we are trying to sort of work up to increase in their funding because they are one of the few organizations that's able to show us longitudinal data that they're collecting of impact that they've had. The Manhattan Emergency Shelter. So this year, they requested 36,000, and we kept our same funding from last year at 18,000. Wonder Workshop was a new agency for us this year. And some of our group wasn't familiar with Wonder Workshop. And so we had a really great time kind of just introducing them to that. We decided to fund their request of 20,000 at 13,800. And we chose that specific number because that funded a full position for them because they broke down their request into two separate things. So we are hoping to see some good return on our investment this year and hope that they come back in the future. Pawnee Mental Health. We had a request of 108,185, and we allocated 85,000, which was a $10,000 increase. And I will talk in a little bit about how we decided on that increase because it relates to another agency. Riley County Community Corrections. So the Adult Services Program, they focus more on intensive supervision for felony offenders. And they provide support for alcohol and drug evaluations for their clients. And so they had a request of 30,000, and we decided to recommend this year 25,000. The Juvenile Services Program focuses on the youth court here in Riley County. And we kept their funding request the same this year. So they requested 7,000, and we recommended 7,000. Riley County Court Services Probation. So they provide probation services to both adult and juvenile probation offenders. So they provide funding for substance use evaluations. They provide ATA bus passes for their folks to get to and from those evaluations. Sometimes they have the opportunity to pay for treatment if they have funds available and to help people get to and from probation appointments. And so their funding request this year was 3,000, and we recommended that they get the 3,000. The Restoration Center. So this is the agency that was tied to Pawnee Mental Health. So Restoration Center and Pawnee Mental Health are the two entities that were providing treatment for drug and alcohol services that requested money from us. And the Restoration Center actually closed their main office here in Manhattan last, well, I think it was earlier this month. And so some of those clients that are now not being served at Restoration Center are now being served at Pawnee Mental Health Services. And so we decided to move some of those funds over to Pawnee Mental Health to subsidize some of those clients. Now, the Restoration Center is still providing services in the Riley County Jail. I talked with the director of this agency. And what they're doing is essentially drug and alcohol treatment. However, because it's in a controlled environment, they're not calling it treatment. So it's, they call it an education program. But it's essentially the same components, the same program that you would have in outpatient. And they're also providing prevention at Job Corps. So they're working with youth who self-identify as having a drug and alcohol problem or who have a conviction of some kind of a drug offense. And they have three staff that rotate between those two locations in Riley County. Sunflower Casa requested 43,000, and we were able to allocate 37,000 to this agency. Thrive, which we also already heard about, requested 10,000, and we recommended 10,000 this year. And UFM Team Mentoring Program. So this agency focuses on the very specific at-risk youth. So it's not your kids that are going to Boys and Girls Club. And lots of times, it's the kids that have a higher level of need than Big Brothers, Big Sisters really can meet. And so this is a unique group of kids that are getting some adult mentoring needs met. And so we felt like this prevention program was very targeted. And so we funded their request 100% at 20,000. And USD 383. So the significance for this organization is that our funds help to fully fund their drug and alcohol portion of their social work program. So social workers are only allowed to, by statute, to work with students that have an IEP or some kind of special need identified. And so this allows those same staff to then do some additional work with students that don't meet those IEP requirements. So they are touching on every student in the school district. And we had a request from them for 209,000, and we recommended this year 190,000 for them. Here's a total of all of the requested funding, which was a little over 700,000. We recommended that we allocate all of our funds with no carryover for the next fiscal year. And like I said at the beginning, that's a difference of 217,000 in what was requested versus what we could recommend. And then this is a new chart for us this year, some historical funding. So we go back to 2015, just looking at what agencies have requested and what we've been able to allocate based on the funding available for special alcohol. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys would have.
I'm curious how, I can see a descending total. And I wonder how you, how do you, what kind of help did you have? Or how did you magically know how much to bring the total down?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, it's based on our forecasted. Yeah, it's based on our forecasted amount. Is that right, Amy? This is probably an Amy question.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. Hi, Commissioners. Yeah, so the number that we came up with for this year is based off of our forecast. We base the amount that we will get in special liquor based on a five-year straight forecast. So it's just a five-year average of the past, of the past five-year actuals. And then we project that out for the future. The majority of the decrease that you see this year is actually due to us having to dip into our cash carryover last year. So we had to, it was 10,000. We had to dip 5,000 into that. So we're not going to be, we didn't start this year with as much cash carryover. And like Jourdain had already said, we're not anticipating starting next year with any cash carryover as well. So that's kind of why we have been decreasing. And as you can see, we had a really good year back in 2017. And then we budgeted too high in 2018, and we ended up not even making all of our fourth quarter distributions because we did not get revenues to meet that. So it's been, it's been a decreasing fund the last few years, and it's been a tough decision for our committee to make.
And that would continue, that fourth quarter is when you make the adjustment. And the agencies may not receive as much for that quarter as they have.
Yes, and that's written into our contracts that if we would project not, or if by the fourth quarter we don't anticipate having enough money to keep us out of the red for the year, we can't make full fourth quarter distributions.
Can't pay what you don't have.
Exactly.
Thank you both.
And just refresh my memory here. Didn't we make a conscious decision in '17 to get the cash out of that so you didn't have the carryover? And I remember the discussion. And we put quite a bit of money in in '17 that we didn't in '16. So we've got a little blip on the screen there.
Yeah, that was before I took over as staff liaison for this board. So I can't exactly speak to it. But that's when we did start cutting into that cash carryover. And I don't anticipate really seeing any of that cash carryover next year.
Because I think, you know, if you took that aberration out, we're essentially flat.
Yes.
And that obviously is impacted by inflation, so.
Yes.
The, just comment on that. Some of the previous philosophy was to try and carry a balance forward because invariably, the legislature played with special alcohol funds every session. Now, fortunately, they haven't done that other than the big change that was made to move some of those sales to grocery stores. And so, you know, I think there's some potential opportunities for us to think of legislative impacts that we might have for the next session that might correct some of that and some ability to either raise that amount as a percentage or some other type of funding that could do that. But we don't want too big a disparity between the competing forces, so.
That was actually related to one of my questions because what you said at the beginning kind of shocked me. So to understand how this is funded, so if I go to the store and buy a bottle of wine, that doesn't fund this. Or I go to Aggieville and have a beer, that doesn't fund this? So-
Bars, yes, right?
It's only at restaurants, bars, catered events, things like that where you're buying a drink. It's not buying a bottle of liquor at a liquor store. None of that comes to this specific tax. It's only on drinks that are at restaurants, bars, or events.
So why would grocery stores, the addition of grocery stores?
It's just taking people away from those establishments. So people are not going out as much because they don't need to. They can buy and go home.
Got it. Okay.
I think the other thing would be maybe try to focus on some technology improvements that looks at a QR code that brings it everywhere, you know? So that will, you can, you don't have that separation. And alcohol is alcohol regardless of where it's sold.
Other questions?
Just other than to compliment you for the amount of time you and your whole group have spent interviewing, and it's hours and hours. And thank you. I know it's, it takes away from your time, your personal time with your family, but it is for the good of the community too, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate what your group does. I, you know, this is one that's never really troubled me simply because it's got a predictable budget process.
Right.
You can predict how much money you have. You do a frugal job of allocating it because if you don't, and it shortfalls, the people you're allocating it to pay the bill. We don't pick it up. And so this is one that's run very much like a business, and you are constrained. I mean, you know, when people complain about Fake Patty's Day, actually, that benefits you. And that seems contradictory because what are we putting the money into? Alcohol prevention. And yet, we got a, we got a party going on every year that helps fund it. So it is sort of always been a little bit strange to me. But appreciate what you're doing.
And I also want to be clear, even though we are, you were very tight on the budget because of the funding that was there, there's still a lot of needs that are not being met because we could not fund them.
Correct.
So it cannot be assumed that because it's 400 and some odd thousand dollars, we don't have a problem, or substance abuse is not on the rise, or people are not drinking as much. It's quite the opposite. They're probably drinking more than ever or abusing more than ever because the resources are not available and it's more accessible where they can take it home now and do that. So just to be clear, when we talk about numbers and budget, absolutely, you did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
But no way should we interpret this as the community does not have a problem because there's a lot of cuts you had to make from the ask that was there. So how do we take care of that is the bigger question because those needs are not being met at the same time. And that's a different problem we're going to face. Again, coming back to healthcare and hospitals and mental illness and all of these staffing issues that we have, as well as taking care of their needs. We know opioid addiction is on the rise. We know substance abuse is on the rise. But the prevention and treatment centers are on the decrease because we don't have enough resources. So that's going to compound somewhere and explode. So we need to be thinking at the bigger picture about the humans involved in this, so.
Thank you.
I think it'll be interesting, too, if you're able to make some correlations next year to how your emphasis on prevention is-
Yes, we hope so.
Yeah, and it may not work in just one year. But certainly, focusing on prevention heavily has the potential to make changes.
Absolutely. That's what we thought also.
I have one additional question. On the USD 383 funding, I think we discussed this last year, but I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm assuming that the other cities within the school district also receive special alcohol cuts? Or like Ogden, do they get special alcohol advisory funds?
This is for all, Ogden's in 383.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
Right, so you're saying, does their city have a separate fund?
Are those cities also getting funding? And are they also funding this program?
That's a very good question, and I don't know the answer to that.
I just, I might, I am all for that program, but I just want to make sure the City of Manhattan isn't fully footing that bill.
Absolutely.
So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's something we could definitely ask at our site visit this year.
Okay. And then, oh my gosh, yes. The other thing that I wanted to ask, and Ron already sounded like he had some ideas. But I would be curious to just hear from the board or maybe have a discussion one night of the board, your recommendations on things that maybe we could take to our, in our key legislative initiatives that we take to the state. Because I guess I have always assumed when I went and bought a bottle of wine at the store that like, that was part of all of this. And just, yeah, how does that grocery store affect that? Because I, yeah, that's something that should be on our initiatives because this is flat. And when we think about the big kind of epidemics in America around like opioids and meth use, like, these are the frontline organizations that are tackling those, and these are, this is our main source of funding. So I-
Yeah, we would love to provide you with that.
Yeah, and I would love to hear more information on that because I guess that's just a, like, a dark spot for me that I didn't actually fully understand. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
One of the things that I guess we started maybe four years ago, and I think Commissioner Butler and I were interested in this at the same time. But I'd ask you and Sarah as well. Sometimes the administrative costs run very high if you have multiple organizations. And, you know, your purview as well as Sarah's allow you to see across all these organizations. And we just ask that, to the degree that it's reasonable, that we don't duplicate services. I mean, sometimes you need services in two different areas. I mean, that's pretty logical. But in other cases, people begin to grow their organization and infringe on the, kind of the sweet spot of another. So just continue to watch that, if you would, over the next year.
Yes, I do remember that particular discussion point from last year.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to hear from Ann now? Oh, from Linda, yeah. Library is next.
We now have Lyndon Up, my good friend, who's Executive Director for the Manhattan Public Library.
Thank you, Bernie. How are you? You too. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to start by introducing the members of the Board of Trustees for the Manhattan Public Library. And with us tonight are Elaine Shannon, our president, and Jamie Morris Hardeman, our newest board member. But other members of the board are Carrie Spencer, Tyler Darnell, Carolyn Elliott, Stacy Colmeyer, Medet Marcos, Jamie Morris, well, I've said Jamie, and Mayor Martin Dodson. All the mayors have the chance to sit on our board when they serve as mayor for their one year or slightly extended terms in the recent years. And all board members are elected to four year, or appointed by the mayor for four-year terms, so. To look at the budget review in our 2020 General Fund, we have four sources of revenue, and 72% of all library revenue comes from the General Fund. And it's the primary source of funding for public libraries all across the state. It funds staffing, collections, equipment, supplies, and the upkeep and maintenance of the building and grounds. $2,798,500 in 2020 is a 4.12% increase over 2019 or a dollar amount of $110,700. And includes the third year of 10 on payment of the expansion bond from 2014. includes the third year of ten on payment of the expansion bond from 2014. And the mill impact of the general fund will be 4.428 mills in 2020. The second tax account is the employee benefit fund, which includes the cost of health insurance, CAPers, workers' compensation, and unemployment benefit insurance. It's a 5.02% increase over 2019 or a dollar amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty. And it always allows for changes in the health insurance rates, which we usually find out about in November, as well as possible changes in family status of current employees. And the total impact of the employee benefit mill is 1.119. Our additional and dwindling source of revenue is grants, fines, fees, and interest. And that's about 4% of our total revenue at this time. The funds have generally supplemented the general fund to support facility maintenance and materials, again, our collections and technology equipment. We expect to see about a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar reduction from 2019 due to declining overdue fines. About 20% of our collection is physical now and the other percentage is digital and there are no overdue fines on digital collections since they return their sales. So we're seeing that slow decrease when we change the technology and access to materials. But we also will see a reduction in E-rate fines for telecommunications because we've saved money on our telecommunications. So less spent, less comes in in that source of revenue, if you want to consider revenue rather than a pass-through account. We've also received state aid for a small amount and it's been declining significantly over the past eight years, but I expect that's going to be pretty flat here for the next year or two. So it's not significant, but it is still there and we appreciate it. So we also had a contract for about $5,000 to host the Riley County Law Library and that contract ends and we'll lose $5,000 in this account with that agreement.
Can you say something, Linda, about the, kind of the trend in fines generally in libraries across the US?
Well, it is, it is that switch and we're in the middle of a very interesting change from, with physical and digital collections at the moment. People want access to both and both collections are well-used. But I think you'll see later that the growing trend is a more rapid increase in the circulation of digital materials, even though physical materials are still the big piece of circulation. So when you check out an audiobook or an ebook digitally, when your time's up, your time's up. There's no dime charge if you over, hold that over. And libraries really are trying to get away from that trend of using small fines for over, a source of revenue. It just doesn't make sense any longer. The handling process involving credit cards, staffing, probably, we're going to be doing some studies in the future to see how that weighs out and how we can reduce that dependence on overdue fines and look for different sources of revenue in the future. We also hear a lot from our friends who are in social services, that that's a barrier to service for many people when you accumulate a certain amount of fines, especially for children, when people come in and check out one dozen, two dozen books, you forget about them, you don't have transportation to the library. It adds up and it's, it's difficult to catch up at times, although we do have methods of working for that. It's a, it's a barrier to service in some ways. So we're going to see that trend continue, I believe. And our final source of revenue is our endowment. And this year it'll be two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And this, this money comes from disbursements from our friends at the library. And every year they work hard to raise membership funds, to run an annual book sale that brings in a nice amount of revenue for library programs and activities. And they also have a used bookshop in the library in the corner that brings in money year-round. So shop at the used bookshop. Disbursements also come from our foundation. Those accounts are restricted. We have one donor that has a restricted account that the interest is used for collections every year and that has made a significant difference in being able to keep the mill levy low to support collections, especially at a time when we have demands for a multiple variety of formats and different types of collections that we've had in the past. They've also supported staff development activities and many projects that move the library forward, including some facility improvements and remodeling. And they're going to assist us in moving forward with some self-check and RFID technology in the future to automate more of our library services. That fund is down a little bit this year, not because they're decreasing their support for the library, because we haven't asked for more, because we don't have any significant facility projects that we're going to be working on in 2020. We completed a lot of those in 2019, including just the completion of the teen area that we saw this year, which is in full swing now and has been particularly popular after school and now in the summer as well. So you see the chart on the mill levy impact for 2020 and because valuations are lower, it was a bit of a bump more than we had expected. So you do see that on the blue line. But if you see the dotted trend line over time, there has been a steady, relatively flat increase over the years. So it has evened out somewhat and even gone down in some years. We're still under the six mill levy limit for both tax accounts, the general fund and the employee benefit fund, and we have been for the past 20 years, so. This is just a comparison of all of those funds that I've just mentioned, the amount that we're requesting this year and the changes from 2019. So you can see the increases and the decreases that we expect along with the total revenue for the library. And finally, our library goals show the commitment to pursuing these goals to inspire young readers with collections and programs that support early childhood literacy and the interest of children from birth to teen years. With the new teen zone, our circulation of young adult fiction has increased by 20% and this is in books since last year. And it's been very popular and well-used since we opened it in November. We have the highest number of young volunteers this year than ever before with thirty-seven teens working this summer with staff to support summer reading. We offer access to more resources than ever with print, physical print and digital collections. In this fall, we'll be adding a streaming video service as well. In July, next month, we'll have one gigabit, one gigabit of high-speed internet access for public use, whether that's on library computers or through the library's Wi-Fi with a personal device. At no, and we do have a decrease really in our telecommunications with new vendors in town. So we're really pleased with that. And again, that impacted the in rate, the E-rate. So an example of how that's used, we've been approached by the regional census coordinator for the area and they've already booked the room to do some training for census collecting next year and will be relying on our computer classroom and PCs for people to fill out their census data if they don't have access to do that in other locations. Whether it's on the Wi-Fi, dependable Wi-Fi or library computers, we want to be a part of that community effort as well. So the foundation funds last year provided two new study rooms and pink noise devices to create some quiet areas in the library for study and independent use. And in addition, we have four meeting rooms that can be reserved for groups for more collaborative activities. And we have a welcoming virtual space on, and our website offers access to numerous resources and training opportunities 24/7. Library use on the average, a thousand people come into the library every day and we have one of the highest per capita use rates of materials in Kansas with fifteen books per capita. And seventy percent of Manhattan residents have a library card, an active library card. Some of the highlights over this year include some fantastic partnerships with USD 383 for their K-Link or Kansas Learning Network grants that have funded some of the early childhood literacy programs we began this year, including books for babies to supply a new board book and an introduction to the library for every baby born at the hospital this year. We've also started a 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten literacy program to encourage children to have books in their homes. Children who have books tend to read more, be more literate, and develop language skills earlier than others. So they've also funded sixth grade field trips, and you see this example in the photo, for sixth graders to come and see the library and visit the new teen area. And they've been very excited about that. They funded a strategic gaming program to teach decision-making skills and strategy. And one of the librarians from Hale Library has partnered with us to conduct that program. Foundation funds have provided those new stu-, the new study rooms have been highly used. And that's been an asset to the year. And in closing, I'd just like to invite everyone to participate in this year's summer reading program, A Universe of Stories, and to thank city staff, the commission, donors, partners, and volunteers who work with the library to encourage reading, learning, and the spirit of community that everyone can find at the
I have a general question. So first, thank you for all the work that you do. I love the library.
Thank you.
And what you do there. And I appreciate the diligence that your board puts into this budget every year. So thank you for that. More of a general question, and you mentioned at the beginning, I read an interesting article the other day about how the sale of physical books have gone up quite a bit in the last few years. But the trend that you mentioned in the library is that you're, a lot of people are navigating or being attracted to digital, the digital books. I was just wondering how, when you think of library, you think of physical books.
Mm-hmm.
So how do you think that that attraction or that trend is going to affect kind of your missions and your services in the library in the foreseeable future? Or do you think it changes it at all?
I think it will change it somewhat. And I don't think that change is unusual. You know, I can remember when I started in libraries thirty years ago, it was a big deal to get VH H test tapes in the library. And now you don't see those. You know, you had audio cassette tapes and you don't see those. So formats are changing. Whatever changes in society, we make that accommodation and changes too. And sometimes it's hard to make that shift because people are still using technology that they have, learning to use their Roku boxes, different things like that. But it, it happens over time and through attrition and I keep, I think that's just going to be always evolving. Print, it's hard for me to imagine a world without print completely. But I still think that those portable formats and everything you can access on your phone or a portable device are increasingly important.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. That was terrific. I appreciate the job you're doing. Maybe the, the one question is that you and I discussed is kind of the, the cap on property tax, the six mills.
Right.
And as that chart showed, I mean, you've done a great job of staying almost flat over these years, even with the building fund.
Right.
And we've got seven more years to go on that. So the expectation, I assume, is that we all keep doing about what we're doing. And my, my own observation over there, just from sitting on the board for a while, is that the, the books are still, I would say, primary, particularly for the younger children.
Mm-hmm.
But we've accelerated the access for maybe the teens and, and some adults for online services. And some of it's streaming now instead of.
It is.
Physical cassettes or something. So it is a, an emerging technology dilemma.
It is. And downloadable audio is one of the most popular formats so that you can listen where you're at, when you're driving, cleaning house, traveling, all of those things. But that is the challenge for the future and it's a challenge for publishers as well to figure out digital rights management and how that's going to shake out for their business model.
If you haven't done so and you have a headache, you ought to go up and sit in the pink noise area.
[laughing]
Big girl.
I would just compliment our library. I'm really proud of it and serving on the library board was eye-opening because I had never served at that, at that level before. And I think it's a place where people want to go. And that's what's also important. I wondered, a question I had was, how do you feel like Hale Library's closure has, you've picked up, I'm sure, some, I know students are looking for every nook and cranny in the community they can find for a study space. And I'm sure the library has picked up some of that. And I wondered if you, if you have any way of trying to figure that out.
Often tables and chairs in those study rooms are full. And that's been a demand over there that's increased as people want a space to work. And I guess you think we're the original co-working space.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, there's things there for everyone. And trying to keep that balance between quiet and active areas has been a challenge. The pink noise has been a pretty, pretty slick solution and we discovered that at that med library. Hale staff, I think, has done a fabulous job during this time of trying to be in different locations and to continue with their services. But we have seen more people come in to find a place to sit, to connect to the Wi-Fi to study. And we usually reserve our auditorium and several of our meeting rooms during exam cram times and set those up. Our friends provide snacks for students and, and offer a place where they can go to study to get out of the dorms or the apartments.
It's a wonderful compliment that you've been able to provide during that serious time on the campus.
See, I just wanted to mention, at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we were talking about what we could cut out of the budget. And of course, the library doesn't fall in that category because it's covered by a charter ordinance that basically says six mills. So what we, what we're getting is not really a budget request, it's a briefing on how well they did their job. They did a pretty good job. And I've always been concerned though that, you know, it says six mills and doesn't include the employee benefit fund. So in future years, the library budget could exceed that. And that's why I've recommended that the city commission relook the charter ordinance and place the employee benefit fund into it so that it can never exceed six mills. And you've done that for, you know, the past few years on your own.
Twenty.
Just taking that. But, 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 but it's not mandated. And I'm for some predictable budgeting. And then that would make it clear because the city manager can't tinker with this thing. And, and I think the library's doing a good job. One way, if you just want to judge it, because I found this interesting, it's probably why Hastings went out of business. When I go to the library, every time I check out a book, it tells me how much I would have spent. You get a little receipt and it, and it says you would have spent X. And apparently I've spent more than six mills. So I appreciate what you're doing there.
We're glad we could save you some money.
Okay. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to ATA and Ann. You got a right shotgun?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you this evening. We want to talk to you a little bit about fixed routes in Manhattan and how those are going. And I've brought with me Jared Tremblay from the MPO. The MPO helps us enormously with transportation planning. And they've been instrumental in helping us to implement the new routes that have been operating now for almost a year. And so I thought I would like to have Jared kind of come in and, and kind of review some of the things we've done and planning-wise, some of the things we're going to be doing too later this year.
Thank you, Ian. Good evening, commissioners. This first slide here just shows the ridership over the last two years. Let me expand that up for you. Thank you. There we go. Is that easier to read? Ridership over the last two years. And that vertical orange dashed line shows when writer, when the routes changed over from the previous system to the new system last year in 2018. And you can see a dramatic increase in ridership month to month. It's continuing to grow up, to go higher. And on average, it's a hundred and fifty-four percent increase in ridership. With that, anecdotally, we've heard a lot of feedback. And this one here specifically was from Ron Orchard. And he said, "Today I was able to make a 12-minute bus ride that used to take me a 40-minute walk across a 50 mile an hour road with no crosswalk." Additionally, this came from The Chamber. Transportation is a big deal in a lot of things, including economic development. This is from Cushman and Wakefield. And the second most requested asset for industrial communities as well, industrial businesses as well as blue collar jobs would be access to public transportation. And all of that is to say that last year with ATA, they launched something called the K-Teen Connector and they had three private partnerships that helped fund that route. And it's averaging 464 rides a year. And that provides direct access, I'm sorry, a month, excuse me, 464 rides a month between Ogden and GTM Florence and Job Corps. But what I really want to talk to you about today is how we're looking at analyzing the data. Everything here tonight has been about being responsible with funding and that's what this chart is about here. So this is the workflow, basically, we go through with ATA. And it's very, it's entirely data-driven. So we get data. Every time someone gets on the bus, there's an iPad on the bus that hit the number of people that board. That data goes back to ATA. We look at it, we download it, we can see where people are riding by stop, by time, and by day. And so then we look for patterns and trends. And then from there, we take that information and we look to tweak and make a better system through planning and implementation. And this is a cyclical thing, something that won't stop. The data will drive the system. And so this is just an example here. This is a simple map. The larger the dot, the more ridership. And the, the small dots circled in red are locations we had discussed of removing ridership. They're not generating demand. Let's take away low-demand spots. At the same time, we kind of laid those out. And you can see here, the stops with red arrows are being removed. And those are the lowest ridership stops. And so after we've looked at this through a lot of work, basically what we've done is we've kept the high-demand spots and our goal is to reconnect the dots, the. is we've kept the high-demand spots, and our goal is to reconnect the dots, the high-demand spots, as efficiently as possible. And so this is an updated map. The system overall looks very similar, but we've done some things that will increase ridership satisfaction as well as more efficient use of funding. And to that end, that change, we will be, or we, ATA will be launching at the end of July, will result in a 7.2% reduction of mileage. Meanwhile, we will be maintaining the connectivity. You can see that residences stay basically flat. They will be serving more apartments, and medical and grocery stores will all stay with service. In addition, all five routes will continue to run throughout the year, and three of them will have 30-minute frequencies. I just wanted to note that 110 households in Manhattan does not have a car. And so what does that look like for riders? This is more input that we have received from riders. They may have connectivity today, but maybe they have to transfer once or even twice. And so with this new system, we're going to be increasing across-town connections. And you can see here, for example, Candlewood to K-State no longer will require a transfer. Or Candlewood to K-State, you know, will now, instead of being 34 minutes, will be down to 22. Or Walmart to South of Points, while currently you can go there in 10 minutes, the return leg currently can take you up to 50, this will be 10 minutes there and 13 minutes back. And so the idea is to use data, again, to make a more efficient system that is also better for everyone. Thank you.
So with all of that said, we're not asking for any increase in our funding from the City of Manhattan. I wanted to share, this is not changing enormously from last year. One of the really interesting, I think, data points that we're noticing is that although this past year, K-State student, faculty, and staff all can ride the entire system for free, our rider income has actually not dramatically reduced. It's almost identical to what it was this time last year. And so that tells us that we are reaching more and more people among the general public in the community who are using the system. Ridership is up dramatically, so I think that is kind of proof, if you will, that we are reaching those folks that we've wanted to all the time, and that we've created a system that is much more responsive to the needs of the community as a whole. As Jared said, we do have private partnerships with different businesses in town. We will continue to seek those out, as always, throughout our entire service area, not just here, but in Gary and Potawatomi Counties. This is a public-private partnership, and we need the support of the whole community to make this work. So in terms of our budget, just as you're talking about personnel costs and health insurance, you know, those are things that we have to face as well. I would mention that, you know, we're expected to, for the foreseeable future, according to our health insurance consultants, we're gonna be looking at an 8% increase in our health insurance coverages for the next several years. So that's a stressor for us to have to address, to make sure that we keep those health insurance costs reasonable for our employees. And that's, I think we're all kind of collectively in that same spot, trying to overcome that. So I would stand for any questions that you have, and thank you for the opportunity to have your consideration this evening.
I don't have a question, because I get to ask you questions a lot
Okay.
...on the board and the NPO.
Yeah.
But I guess I have a general charge. Jared, you kinda hit it at the beginning of the presentation. I think one of the things that we have done that have somewhat cornered in ATA and public transit, really in general, in Manhattan and our society as a whole, is coding it as a social service, that this is a service for low-income people.
Right.
And it absolutely does benefit those people.
Right.
And it builds equity in those communities. But I think we have to be better at selling the economic development aspects of this, and I'm not sure that's something that we've always done very well. So I would love to see a bigger push from NPO, ATA, both, on some of these aspects. I have been taking, I have an ATA bus route right off of Allen Road, and it actually surprises me that that dot is as small as it is, because every day I get on that bus to go to work in the morning, there's at least eight or nine other people on that bus.
Well, this may be true, but
I know.
K-State has many more times that.
I know, I know, but I'm just
I'm glad.
Just because it's a small dot, don't think that anybody's not riding it.
Oh, no, no.
I'm telling y'all, people ride. But I ride that to work quite frequently, and the way that we have to sell and think about it is every single person who makes that choice to take the public transit, that's one less parking spot that we have to build in a parking lot.
Absolutely.
That's one less car driving on the road that we have to pay to maintain. And if you look at any city budget, the amount of that budget that goes towards asphalt is astronomical.
Right.
And at the same time, you're reducing your energy use, all of those things. And I don't think that we talk about those benefits enough. So in the future, I'd encourage both entities to push more on that. Otherwise, thank you for all that you do. And I try to sing your praises every chance I get in briefing sessions after our board meetings.
Thank you. No, we, I think we both agree very strongly that it is about economic development. In our regional services of traveling back and forth between Manhattan, Ogden, Fort Riley, and Junction City, over 40% of those trips are people going to work. Since 2006, that was the year that, in our services, employment trips overtook medical rides as the number-one reason people were using the service. And that's just, that's data-driven. That's not, that's not an opinion, that's strictly from the data. So when we talk to businesses, we talk to community colleges in the area, their concern is how are we gonna get people to our educational institution? How are we gonna get them to work? And we do that more and more. We do have now a mobility manager who is helping us to go throughout the region to talk about the economic development benefits of public transportation. We will never, never forget or abandon the folks who need the services for social services, ever. That is core to our mission, but we are truly about economic development.
I wanted to mention, just for the folks out there, your chart doesn't have one key little bit of information. How much money are you requesting from the city?
$129,884.
And that's about the same as it was last year?
Yes, it is.
As I recall. So, and I'm with you on, you know, I think that, you know, years ago, ATA was part of social services, and I pushed to get that removed, because I didn't think that was appropriate place for it. And I do agree that it should be under economic development funds. And instead of having $129,000 impact on the mill levy, as we started the discussion this morning, we should fund it out of economic development funds, making the city manager's job easier.
Either way, you just want the money, you don't care where it comes from.[1076.13][1076.13](laughing). That's for us, that's for us to have that argument, I suppose, or deeper discussion. No, I think you're doing a terrific job. I do like to see the Florence Corporation, as well as Job Corps and everybody else utilizing it. For the residents in Ogden, do they pay also to ride, or how does that work?
So we have a, we have a very interesting partnership, and Jared can kind of speak to it too, but with the Howe Foundation. For the rest of this upcoming fiscal year, we have a grant with them, and if you are living in Ogden, you can go to the community center and you can receive a 30-day bus pass, and it is courtesy of the Howe Foundation.
Okay. What's the name of the foundation?
It's the Howe Foundation.
Okay. The Howe Foundation. Yeah, that's terrific, because there's a, I was talking to a couple of high school students, and they wanted to do, have jobs here in Manhattan, but they didn't have a ride. So hopefully that's working for them in some manner, because they don't have a driver's license yet, or they don't have a car. But this is one of those things that we want them to still have the skills for it. What we noticed is, when we talked to K-Staters, and I'm glad it's free for them, there's more of them that are not having a driver's license or don't have a car, and we're not just talking to international students anymore, it's just your regular population that are coming here without cars. And hopefully that's benefiting them all around, and it looks like it is. So I think when I first came on the city commission, there was discussion of, do we even really need it? Who uses it? I only see one person on it. And now there's thousands of people using it. So I think that's a really good investment for the city of Manhattan and for the residents that live here. So, yeah, I think, I don't mind the 129, we'll figure out where we get it from. So, thank you. I, oh, I was just gonna say that I appreciate your ask or your request being flat, but I appreciate the work that you do also.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for me to ask for you to make a commercial about, when is it your, aren't you having a two-week period of free rides? When is that?
That'll be starting the 29th of July.
Okay.
For two weeks.
Okay. To get people to ride, that tested out?
Try the new system.
See where you can go.
Before school starts, before things get really, really hectic.
Yeah.
So that they can try it out.
And are you, are you changing the routes at all, or are they steady now?
We are making some adjustments
Tinkering.
...in order to make them more efficient and more effective.
Okay.
So that folks can get across town quicker without quite so many transfers. That was one of the big feedback points that we had, that they were maybe feeling like they were on the bus for too long. So in doing that, we were able to reduce the total number of miles that we're traveling, and I think it's, I think people are gonna be very happy with it.
When will that go into effect?
The 29th of July.
Oh, so the route, the slight route changes
Yes.
...will be effective the 29th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we're also tying in a little bit more with the K-18 Connector, so that there's a greater, we really essentially want it to be seamless. You know, one day we'd like to see fixed route bus stop at the airport, and then just, you know, have that Ogden to Manhattan straight connection, and just seamlessly tie into the citywide routes. So we'll get there incrementally.
Thank you.
Is it this or this? I'm not sure which.
Second slide.
Oh, second slide, yeah, absolutely. This one.
When I looked at this, and based on what you said, so you see the purple line is rising before the yellow line.
Yeah.
Is this, and you said essentially that it went up 154% after we instituted the change. But when you go out to the end of the line, it almost came back down to where that yellow line intersects. So I'm trying to figure out what is going on with the chart, I guess.
Okay.
Well, September, October are two of our busiest months, and then in November, of course, there's a week where the university's off for that week, and Thanksgiving week, so ridership drops there. And then we do still see that drop at the December break, when you have the Christmas break. For a month, we're off again. And if you look over to the turquoise chart come January, it starts to rise again, school starts in the middle of the month. I think we're always gonna see that dip that relates to the sessions at K-State, spring, fall, and summer. That's just inevitable.
On the left side of the yellow?
Right here? That is really just a quirk of the style of chart we used.
Okay.
So
That's what I figured.
It is. If we'd used a bar chart, it would've dramatically, it's just the line connection, yes, sir.
The other question I had was, on the last chart, where can you kind of go through that $400,000 that comes through local governments?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is our 129 part of that 400,000?
Yes, yes.
And if so, what comes from the county?
It's about 4.7% of that $430,000 is City Manhattan. Riley County provides us with $100,000, and then an additional $20,000 that comes from roads and bridges. Gary County provides us with $200,000 annually. Potawatomi County provides us with a little over $8,000, in addition to which, we also provide dispatching for their public transit service in Potawatomi County, and that's another 22, a little over $22,000. We're forgetting. We've applied to the City of Junction City for some funding this year. That's not in there, because I don't know if we'll be awarded that or not. Are we Ogden? I think we got, we talked about Ogden, but I don't
Ogden does have a small portion of local match, specifically for the K-18 connector.
Yeah.
Does the
I think that's everybody.
With the growth in blue township
Mm-hmm.
Does that warrant an examination of establishing a fixed route to bring them in, or?
We've, we have it on our radar. We, it's something to definitely look at. I don't think that we're there yet, but I think it's something that in the future, it's definitely something we have to consider. Right now, we do go as far out as Womigo, but not yet. I don't know if you have any planning perspectives?
We have thoughts on it.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be done, it's just money.
Kind of the traffic analysis, you know, that you've done, show the increase in traffic coming down 24, so that indicates that a lot of people are cycling, at least through the area. So kind of argues, particularly when you build a new school over there and so on, that it might be time to take a hard look at that.
And we will.
Yeah. We will, we will, definitely.
Okay, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, Gina, downtown Manhattan.
I think she's out in the lobby, she's coming in as we speak.
Right behind you.
I have no doubt.
Hi, Bernie.
Is there a password to this, Gina?
No. Just read only.
Okay.
Try to drink me out.
I'd love to do that. There you go.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I just wanna let everybody know that I have several board members here tonight. Appreciate them being here with us. And of course, my administrative assistant, better known as my right arm and sometimes my left arm, Brooksie McCarty. We've sort of made a habit every year at this time of taking a quick moment to sing praises about one specific city employee that has had just an impact on downtown. And this year, we wanna recognize Cody Kramer, who is the Horticulture Supervisor for Manhattan Parks. He is responsible for the beautiful and colorful annuals that we now have in our large urns. For a long time, we had perennials in there, and he brought all of this beautiful color to downtown, and we're so thankful for that. The other thing that Cody did, these flags here are our Third Thursday festival flags. They're 20 feet tall, and he created, fabricated, actually, the hardware necessary to secure that flag into the ground, so that it would never blow over and it would remain safe, but be really festive-looking for Third Thursday. So huge gratitude and shout-out to Cody Kramer. And if somebody from Parks and Rec could pass that along, I would certainly appreciate it. We're, we really just value him so much, so. Downtown Manhattan should make you proud. I think we've been saying that for a couple of years. You all, over the years, and commissions in the past, have made investments in downtown, and every year that triggers a multitude of reinvestment from existing stakeholders and new partners that we gain every year. This is evidenced by our consistent new business growth, by our steady job creation, by the purposeful building renovations that we have happening every year, and by thriving downtown Manhattan, Kansas-centered events. DMI this year will host or partner in 11 annual events in our district. Our annual survey, we send out an annual survey every year to the community, and they have indicated that they have a desire to attend events in the downtown that are focused on music, art, and food. So we wanted to make sure that many of our events capitalize already on what we already have downtown. We have so many amazing restaurants, great venue, walkable streets, just a good district to be able to host that are focused on music, art, and food. So, we wanted to make sure that many of our events capitalize already on what we already have downtown. We have so many amazing restaurants, great venue, walkable streets. It's just a, a good district to be able to, um, host a lot of these events. And we wanted to make sure that it was capitalizing also on our local talent and what we just already produce in the community. So just a little bit on Third Thursdays, we, we have partners in the community. We have our businesses downtown that have, um, contributed. This year especially, we have our presenting sponsors. We have a cash sponsor, which is exciting, AJ's Pizzeria. And our businesses on our brick and mortar have, businesses have gotten involved and gotten really creative, and that's been the really exciting thing. We've had so many unique, uh, offerings this year. We've had, um, caricatures drawn on coffee cups. We've had a model call at G. Thomas Jewelers, the really popular cakewalk at Bourbon and Baker, a trunk show at Strecker Nelson. Just, everybody's just really getting involved and they're taking ownership. And that's really what you wanna see from a district, is that your businesses, your brick and mortar, are taking ownership of, um, the events that you're, you're putting on. And they're being, um, they're, they're benefited by it. So it's, that's what you want. We have, uh, a unique stewardship downtown. I think it's, it's really safe to say, we really bond together, we really work together. A lot of the businesses are on the same page. We've worked together to help the city protect the investment of nearly $200 million over the last three decades. The DMI Board of Directors, our property owners, our businesses have had a serious influence and impact on preventing urban sprawl, on enhancing our local and regional draw by having unique retailers, dining, local culinary, um, venues, and now especially with our events that are so centered on the community and highlighting local talent. We are filling our office space on our second floors and in the periphery with businesses that attract young professionals, such as technology, media, engineering, um, all kinds of service businesses. We advocate for the protection of the mall investment that was made so many years ago. And our property owners are reinvesting in the downtown all the time. That's evidenced by the developing and restoration of old buildings. Been through that with the Community House recently. Uh, but you, you also see that with the building at, Jan Miller's building at Third and Points. We're getting ready to do, Mary Fisher's getting ready to do a multimillion-dollar renovation on the building at Fourth and Points. So those kind of investments are huge to a small district. They just, they mean so much to the economic development of a district. The success of our district can be measured in our jobs, our, our marked growth of property tax and sales tax, the occupancy of our leasable, commercialable space, our new business, and the adaptive repurposing of older buildings. Right now, as you can see, our commercial occupancy is steady between 95 and 96%. Our residential occupancy for the last six years has remained at like 98%. I think the other 3% or so are models in apartments that can't really even be counted. Um, we, we're just so happy that people wanna live downtown, and so it's great. Of course, personally, I wanna work towards single-family living, where, um, we have homes that are, you can move out of an apartment and into a home. I think that's the next responsible direction that downtown needs to go. 220 new jobs were created since June of last year, and approximately 3,328 people work in the downtown. In addition to our daily brick and mortar offerings, 6,000 or so people rode on our carriage rides. 225 runners ran in our 5K, Pink Up The Pace race, and donated about $1,800 to Johnson Cancer Research Center. 3,000 patrons attended our inaugural season of Third Thursday last year, and we hosted 58 different artists and musicians. This past May, we enjoyed our sixth consecutive sellout of our most popular event, Taste of Downtown. Since June of last year, we've had 10 new businesses open, and that's a net gain of five businesses. Two are set to open in August. I don't know if you saw the, the release of Man Hatchet, which is an axe-throwing business. And, uh, Lindsay, who owns the boutique, raise your hand, Lindsay, is opening a men's clothing store called Pine and Plaid, and it's similar to the women's offering. Six existing businesses have expanded to larger square footage, and that's the thing that really is indicative of a healthy, growing district, is when you have businesses that wanna stay in your district, but they expand either within their space to a larger space, or they move in your district to be in a larger space. We have that happening every year for the past six or seven years. And as I mentioned before, the building on the southwest corner of Fourth and Points will undergo a multimillion-dollar renovation beginning in about a week. And that is another example of repurposing to create new space, new businesses, and new jobs. In 2019, the downtown, and this is within the legal boundary, collected $1.9 million in property tax. And in 2019, the downtown within our legal boundary generated $1.5 million in sales tax. Every year, we put out a survey to the general public. And this year, we noticed a 3% in, increase in our college-aged friends visiting the neighborhood. This is really exciting to us. We've, we've had, we've worked really hard to try to capture every demographic and try to have offerings that fit every demographic in our community. So we're happy to see an increase in our, in college-aged people coming to the neighborhood. We are, actually feel like we can say that we are, are a district that has something for everyone. The combined annual income of our patrons is also nicely spread across all income levels, further indicating that as a district, we have variety. We are pleased that the majority of our patrons are visiting us at least once a week and as often as a few times a week. And what do they come downtown for? Food. 90% of our survey respondents say that they come for the locally-owned culinary offerings. I think everybody's probably pretty aware of that, sort of the food haven there. We wanted to find out what locals and visitors were doing. Um, but we focused this time, our, our, this is, this was a new question to our survey. And we wanted to know, we asked our locals, when they have visitors and guests coming to stay with them, what are the kinds of things that they do? And 90% report that they bring their guests downtown for at least one meal during that visit. 63% shop with their guests in our neighborhood. And super happy, 26% of locals bring their guests to a downtown event. I think we're gonna further explore this question in next year's survey and see what else we can find out about the people that come from out of town to our district and what they're doing and the dollars that they're spending, what's the demographic. Um, I think there's more to know there. But for this year, we're, we're really happy to know that a quarter of those people are, are coming to downtown events. And it appears from, sorry, it appears from our, uh, survey that guests, locals are bringing their guests down at least twice a year, so that's great. This was so, this next thing was so interesting to me because it appears that Red Lobster and Kohl's has moved out of the mindset of our citizenry, and we've moved on to Trader Joe's. No kidding. It was really crazy to see almost half of, of the respondents listed, like named. This was a, a thing where you got to actually write what you wanted. And Trader Joe's was, was if you had a magic wand. It was so interesting. So I don't know about that. I think we're gonna try to make a couple of these other things happen. Um, we'll see how that goes. And this is just a note of thanks, um, for the in-depth discussions and reviews that were done, um, thus far on the sale and privatization of the Community House. I know you all received my, our, our letter about that. Um, the adaptive repurposing of historic buildings is so important to economic development and to the life of downtowns and to districts. And this is the kind of project that will only enhance and improve downtown because, again, it's that creating jobs, creating spa, new spaces, creating property tax, creating sales tax. It's just such a positive, and we really like the direction that you guys are all thinking about going with this. Uh, this spring, we launched a new program called Friends of the Neighborhood. We've had a lot of businesses ask us, um, how can they be involved in downtown that don't, that aren't actually located downtown? So we've, we've launched this program now where, um, you can contribute to DMI and be a part of, of us virtually, sort of. I mean, obviously, you can't be a part of us, but, um, with be, getting access to information, you can sponsor events, be the first to sponsor an event. Uh, there's some, some benefits to it. So we're really excited about how this could potentially go for us, and it's brand-new. So we don't have too much to report on it yet, but just happy that we're finally moving forward with this kind of program. And then lastly, um, as always, it is election season, and we always host a public forum for our city commission candidates. This year, we're, um, at the WRM as always. Uh, we're doing it a little bit early, at 5:30. There'll be a happy hour, the bar will be open, the WRM will be serving drinks. We will have, uh, light snacks. And we hope to just really engage the community this way and, and let the general public have a way to meet, uh, city commission candidates. Last note, our July 3rd Thursday is coming up, and it will be our largest one thus far. We'll be closing down the streets, closing down Points Avenue. We'll have some bands, we'll have, um, some aerialists and a snow cone machine and just different vendors out on the street, keeping in the, with the flavor and flair of arts and music. Um, it's also our annual downtown sidewalk sale, so we're just gonna make a huge day of it. So I hope everyone will come down and, and have a good time with our arts and music and, and celebrate the localness of what we're, what we're doing in downtown. Any questions?
I'll start. I don't, I have a question slash statement, I guess.
Okay.
Um, and I, we've talked about this before. One of my particular interests, and I don't think I've really found a way in the last year and a half on the commission, I haven't, haven't had any bright ideas, but I, we talk a lot about increasing density, and we have opportunities to do that in the downtown. And, I mean, study after study after study has come out that said, pretty, pretty much millennials and youngers...
Yep.
The trend is dense. And even as they get older, that trend stays the same, and they're not changing. But I feel like our incentive structure, um, in terms of property development is for net new development. And so I, I just wish that we could have a little bit, and I don't know how this forum starts, if DMI starts it or another entity starts it, but I wish we could have a conversation about what can the city do, or what can we as elected officials and leaders in the community do to help incentivize, um, increased redevelopment and increased production of density, um, in, in downtown? And I feel like I've been asking that question a lot, and no one's, no one's really said anything to me or come up with any ideas. And maybe it's 'cause there's not an easy idea out there, but, um, I don't know. I, it's, it's, when we talk about falling revenue and, uh, we talk about adding homes onto the rolls, the particular homes that we should be advocating to add on the rolls are ones that are in dense environments because the infrastructure cost per head is much lower, so...
Agreed. You and I have talked about this.
Yeah.
And I 100, 100% support this conversation and how we can get this done. I think it's gonna take a huge movement from the private sector as well. Um, it's, it's a little bit different, I think, geographically because where you see the most success in the, in that type of thing being done is right next to a college campus. I mean, that's where you can really look and see your hard data and look at the models that have been really successful. I'm not sure, I mean, that's how you get your, your public side on board, for sure. Um, but I am, I am so willing to have this conversation and figure out how to create this density. I think it's a good start with this, with the private side, for sure.
I, this is not analytical data, and I'll kinda end on this by any means, but I can tell you, if I looked at an investment that I could've made in Manhattan in the last five years personally, I would have bought a loft or a condo in downtown Manhattan before I bought a single-family house.
Yep.
And I have plenty of friends that I know probably feel the same exact way 'cause many of them live in cities and are already doing that now. They prefer those over living in suburbia. Um, so I, I just, I feel like this is something that we talk about a lot, but there really like, nothing has changed in the last two years. So that would be my...
That's the torch passing off to me?
Yes, yes. Come up with a genius idea.
Okay, sure.
And then solve all of my problems for me, Gina. Thank you.
Yeah.
Gina, just, great, great data here on jobs created, employees, and all the events and everything. But again, for folks listening out there that don't see the package, what's the funding request?
Oh, I'm sorry. We are requesting $78,000, same as last year, from, uh, the city commission. And, um, it will be utilized in the same exact manner as it was last year. I think the increase, um, the reason that we requested that increase last year was because we hired a new event manager, which has proven to be so successful. She's been so good at what she's, what she's doing. Um, and, and it's really, that, that's her salary, essentially.
Yeah, and I, I knew the numbers, we get them in the packet.
I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
But it's just the folks out there, you know, the folks out there watching on TV?
Yeah.
Don't know that, so that's why I asked the question. I, I knew the answer already, but appreciate it.
Yep.
Yeah, Gina, um, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
I think, uh, it is a thriving area, and we certainly do love to go visit there often, to eat, mostly. Um, I just wanna know how your, um, your business district fees collections has been. In the past, we've had a few turbulent times.
So good.
Has it been good?
So good.
Okay, good. We like a drama-free.
Bernie, Amy. Amy's a rock star.
I know.
She's so good.
Yeah.
We, we, and Brooksie, and like, it's been so good. So happy. Like, we finally have like a really good system in place, good communication, good relationship. It's just been really good.
And the board is satisfied?
Yep.
And everything?
Both boards, DMI board, BID board.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm really impressed with the data you brought. And I know it's...
Thank you.
I think it's hard to get. And, uh, I don't know about a survey necessarily collecting all of it, but I, it does tell the story and, uh, in spades because you have the data.
Thank you.
When you mentioned new stores, new businesses?
Uh-huh.
You, you've got 10, and then you said subtract 5?
Yeah.
Is that the same with jobs, or is the jobs net?
The jobs is net.
So it's 220, you made 300 and lost 80 or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
When you talked about the 98% occupation of second floors...
Are you talking about residential?
Right.
Okay.
My assumption is that there are a lot more opportunities on the second floors. Um, and getting back to Commissioner McKee's, uh, comment, then the incentive would be to have the landlords build those out, to make them available, the ones that aren't built out now, which then causes you to say, well, would they be a, a purchase or a rent?
Correct.
So in the case of a rent, it, it might not increase our, um, property tax or anything else very much, but it would, uh, contribute to some other things in the city. So is there, you see any, uh, movement towards build-outs of some of our existing space that haven't been converted?
So I can tell you that, um, yes and no. The, the renovation that's gonna happen at Fourth and Points on the southwest corner, that will include a brand-new loft space. Um, it's very difficult in the, in the commercial, in the buildings that are commercial on the bottom, and there's space up top for living, to condo that out because it's, it's hard to separate what is, you know, what a, what a property owner's willing to sell. So we have, we actually, there is a list, um, being kept with an architectural firm downtown of interested folks who are looking for condos, white-box condos, that, um, they can purchase. But this would be an actual new build. This would be a new building, and everything in that building would be for sale. So, yes, I mean, the idea's definitely out there, it's, it's taking shape. But as far as living spaces on top, um, some are being converted, but it's, it's not... I think a lot of property owners, it's easier for codes and other reasons to keep that as office space. It's much more difficult to convert it into a residential living. Um, but you can get more rent, though, too, if it's, if it's residential. So I think it just kinda depends.
I think access is another issue.
Yep, and parking.
To second floor, having to go through the merchant's, um, store in order to get to, uh, short of building exterior kinds of, I mean, at least I know one business that, that's an issue for.
Right, yep. Uh, most of the businesses that are, that are designed like that are the, or the residential that's upstairs, they have access, their own access, either on the front or the back... the front or the backside. But like I said, it's, it's, the demand really is for wanting to purchase that condominium. And because it's so difficult to condo out a building and separate it out, I think you're really gonna look at new, new construction in order for that to happen.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing on, you know, we, we talked before about the street fest, because I think that creates its own energy downtown.
Yeah.
And so I'm really happy to see that.
Thank you.
We've still got a little bit of fixing up to do on some of our storefronts, but I'm sure, once people see things going around, on around them, they will, they will get on the bandwagon, so.
Yes. And while I have your attention, I, we've gotten so much feedback from Third Thursday. I mean, it's, like, so exciting. I think that it's gonna be time to talk about that open container ordinance soon.
Yeah.
It's something that we really get, is a demand, and, and I think that it will just take Third Thursday right over the top.
Good. Okay. Well, thanks very much, Gina.
Thank you for your attention again this year. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Gina, too. Appreciate it. Yep. Manhattan Art Center, that's not...
I don't think we have Brian Niehoff, but we do have Penny Senfendt, who's the... Is Brian here?
Sorry, I'm not Brian.
Oh, you're not.
I'm sorry, I'm not Brian.
How are you, Penny?
I'm gonna keep monitoring this session.
There you go.
Do that.
Yes, sure.
Penny Senfendt, I'm not Brian Niehoff. Thank you for listening to me instead. We've been at this building since 1993, and we bought it, I don't know how many of you remember, but in part, thanks to the city commission, who helped a lot with that. Margareth Clarenberg also helped a lot. She unfortunately passed away, and when she did, we owned the building completely, so we've been lucky in that regard. We put this nice new red fascia on in 2003. We took away that lovely gray mansard roof that everyone complained about. The red that you see up there has since faded, but I think the organization has grown a lot more vibrant, and I hope you'll agree with that. What we focus on in all areas is local talent. The only exception to that is our Birdhouse acoustic music series. For that, we do bring in artists from outside, but that actually has a huge benefit. I can't tell you how many artists come in, actually, how many artists email us and say, can I, can I come perform there? Because the artists who have been here go out and tell their buddies on the road, it's a great place to perform. You should go and see if you can perform there. So it gets us a lot of good publicity that doesn't cost us anything. Our programs are very much intergenerational, and so experienced artists help the inexperienced artists, and that's, I think, a huge, a lot, excuse me, can't speak. That picture is from My Fair Lady, which we did at the beginning of last season. It sold extremely well. It attracted people from way beyond Manhattan. And that's what we try and do. We aim to, although we have locals in, in the shows, especially when we have K-State students, we do get a lot of people who come from a long way away. When we have birdhouse artists who are very popular, they come from, I can't believe how far away. This young lady came to us actually trained already, but we do provide training on the light board, on sound in particular, which is pretty complex. That soundboard there is a new one that we invested in last year. It has a lot larger capacity than we had. We're also investing, thanks to a generous donor, we're investing in LED lights. We're just starting. It's gonna be extremely expensive to replace everything with LED. But when we do get them all in, we do have the, the board already, so we'll be training our lighting people on that. When we do get the lights in, of course, that will be a lot less heat-generated. They will take a lot less electricity. There's one instrument that you can do all the different colors with, so that's gonna be a huge benefit, too. Lovely picture of our gallery. That, again, is local talent. One example, Rapid Up Annual Art Exhibit and Sale. We have approximately 90 artists, and most of them come from Manhattan or very close by, or a few of them lived in Manhattan but no longer live here and still send in their work. This exhibit, Rapid Up, has been held every year for the past 20 years, and the proceeds support Manhattan Arts Center and local artists. We have classes for all ages. We have a lot of teachers who don't have a lot of experience teaching, but they have the, the knowledge that they need to pass on. And again, we have young teachers who benefit from the guidance that they get from more experienced teachers. Our after-school programs and summer classes fill a void for parents who are looking for something, for a different experience for their children. Our clay studio was started by local potters. Again, it wasn't something we dreamed up. It was something that local people wanted. Potters who don't need instruction can come in on our open studio hours and do whatever they wish. Of course, there's a fee for that. Children who don't necessarily connect with two-dimensional art will very often go, go nuts with clay. They love the, having something in their fingers that they can do things with. As you can see in this picture, we do offer programs where family can, families can work on projects together, and those are quite popular. We do try and keep our prices affordable, which is difficult, but that is another area where the city's support is very much appreciated. This is our K through 6 group violin program. It used to take place in a school, and it transferred to the Arts Center in 2002. We've had a number of kids who start here and move on to the Golden Silver Orchestra and/or to private lessons. This was our production of Tut Tut, because there's a huge demand for children's theater in Manhattan. We started addressing that in 2007, when we brought, brought in Missoula Children's Theater, which was a one-week residency, and we still bring them in every, every year. Several years ago, we added a children's production in the fall, and then a couple of years ago, we added another one in the spring, which is really difficult with our schedule to fit everything in, so we have to just make do as best we can. This particular program, we, we needed to cap at 40 kids, because in our facility, 40 kids is a lot. But as it happened, there were several more who wanted to get in, so we, we took them as well. Experimental theater, slightly older kids, this is for high school students. This, we just had the performances last weekend, and it was the 31st year of that program. It's a five-week workshop. The students study avant-garde authors. They write and perform their own pieces in the style of these authors. I wanted to mention, as I put in my letter as well, that we have been reaching out into the community quite a lot. And one of the main ways we've been doing this is through the Community School for the Performing Arts, which has seen huge growth since we started it in January 2018, just way beyond what we expected. One benefit of this is we were able to bring in a violin teacher. We learned that there were violin students being taken to Topeka and even Lawrence for violin lessons. We've got a lot of them now in Manhattan. Our violin teacher that we brought in is already completely full. Her studio, she can't take anymore. So we've had another violin teacher actually come over from Lawrence to teach a day here. This past year, we've had 115 students enrolled in private music lessons through C-Spar, as we call the community school. We also offer group classes and workshops. We know of four students who were going to go to university in other towns but have decided to stay and attend K-State because of the positive experience they've had through C-Spar. And I imagine that number will, will keep growing, too. Parents choose C-Spar because of the quality of the faculty, music faculty we have here. And of course, adult students can also participate. That was the Flint Hills Vocal Academy, which happens in the summer with middle school and high school students. Another project that we do, are doing with K-State is with the art department. We're hosting an MFA exhibit. We agreed to do it for five years and then see how it's going. I think the students like it in particular because it gives them a different audience. People come to the Arts Center to see a play or a concert, and they go and visit the, the galleries at the intermission. We've also noticed that there are more people coming in on Saturdays to see the, see the galleries. We do, as I mentioned earlier, we do have an extremely tight schedule trying to fit everything in. The reason that we got the building in the first place was so that the theater could, could rehearse in the same spaces it was performing in. We're now in a situation where a local business very generously lets us use their space. They have a big open space, because we need the space for other activities. So they rehearse some of the time, not all the time, off-site. We also host other people's activities to help them out when we can. And for some of these things, for a lot of them, we don't charge at all. The Ferry Godmother's lingerie luncheon, we've had for, I think, maybe since it started. Friends of K-State Libraries Meeting was at the Arts Center this year. We have Boy Scouts Badge Days. So we do what we can to make our space available to other organizations when we are not using it. This is the Young People's Concerts for grades K through 3, which has been going since 1986. It's an introduction to classical and jazz music. The, the musicians are all from K-State. And we invite USD 383, the Catholic School, Flint Hills Christian School, and home-schooled kids. And they all come to All Faiths for a 30-minute concert. I think there are about 1,200 that attend on any given day. The, the school district used to be able to pay for the busing. They can't do that anymore, so we have been lucky enough to find a sponsor to pay for the busing, which is just over $3,000. So it's not insignificant, but we're, we're just really delighted to be able to keep those concerts going. We're a member of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce, and you might wonder what that picture has to do with the Chamber of Commerce. For two years now, we've participated in the Classroom to Career Program. So we go out to one of the schools, I think it's fourth grade, talk to the kids about careers in the arts, and then there's a few other activities, and then they come to our facilities and take a tour around. Excuse me. Other schools' programs that we help with are cultural programs touring through the schools, and my board has agreed up to a certain amount that we, we will help fund those so that they can happen. We've also helped with Ogden Instrument Repair. They have a lot of instruments, musical instruments that need to be repaired, and they have a certain amount of funding through grants, but it's very often not enough. So we've actually helped to the tune of about $1,000 for a couple of years now. We give coupons for auctions at other schools and other community organizations that are having silent auctions and things like that, so we try and help in that way, too. This was the Earl Project, which is burnout art workshops for veterans and soldiers. And we're hosting their exhibit in the work of, in, exhibit of their work, sorry, in spring 2020. This is part of their healing process. It came to us through Jerry Craig at the Department of Art, and we're very happy to be able to participate and help that project along. It had, overall, across the nation, it's funded by the Mid-America Arts Alliance, the NEA, state agency, state arts agencies of Arkansas, Kansas, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma, and Texas. So it's a pretty, pretty big project. Other Kansas partners in the project are the Marianne Kisler Beach Museum of Art and Bethany College. Empty bowls is another way that we've been able to give back to the community. We've provided clay for bowls. We've hosted make days, and we fire the bowls when they're ready. Then there's a soup day, when you can take your bowl and get some soup that is donated by local restaurants. And this year, through that, we raised about $2,700 that went to Common Table and Cat's Cup to help fight hunger in, in our community. We're a member of the Arts and Humanities Association of Manhattan, which now has about 40 members. Of course, not all 40 show up every month, but we do meet monthly, apart from June and December. It's a really good way of knowing what other organizations are doing in the community. At the Arts Center, we get a lot of people who come in and just want information, which it's easy to get to us because we have a nice big parking lot. And they think, oh, you know, that looks like somewhere I might be able to find information on something. So they will come in and ask us about actually all sorts of things. And in part through the Arts and Humanities Association, we know, we can say, sorry, we don't offer that, but go and see the Beach Museum, or go down to Strecker Nelson, or wherever we think they will be able to find what they're looking for. A new organization that we're involved with is I-70 Theaters, which has been going for, I think it's about a year now. It goes from the Colombian to Salina. We meet quarterly. We share experiences. We, we share costumes, props, you know, as, as we can. We talk about theater policies, and we just, we just learn from each other and benefit from each other's experience, which, I've been at the Arts Center 20 years, but I still find this kind of exchange really, really helpful. We are requesting, win, $46,000 this year, which is an increase of $2,300. That's actually less than our insurance premiums are rising. But we would really appreciate it if you can help us to that, to the tune of $46,000. We have appreciated your support all these years, and thank you very much for letting me present. Be happy to answer any questions if I can.
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say how much I appreciate the center. I sold a couple of productions in the last few months, and I'm always so impressed by them. And believe it or not, when I was younger, I actually did children's theater, because I was pretty petrified of public speaking, if you believe it or not. And I wasn't very good at it, so only did it a couple of years. But I'm not sure without that experience I would have done things like FFA and debate in high school that led me to where I'm at today. So the effect that those programs can have on kids, even if they don't pursue a career in the arts or arts long-term, is pretty impactful and powerful. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I went to a session of the Americans for the Arts one time. It was on all these famous scientists who do some kind of art. And, you know, a couple of them you've heard of, and you know what they do, like Einstein and the violin. But there were a number of them that, I'd heard of the scientists. I had no idea that they did any art. And when you looked at the art that they did, it wasn't necessarily what you would say was great art. But the point is exactly what you say. You don't have to be good at it. You just have to do it, and you get the benefits of it. So, thank you.
Well, I remember when I first came to Manhattan, not permanently, but when I came the first time and saw the Dutch maid, and actually shopped in the Dutch maid there, so.
I did, too.
Yeah. It's certainly come a long way. The thing that I've noticed, I mean, the inside is wonderful, you, and the things you do there are wonderful. The, the impression, partially, and it might just be me, is that when you drive by, it's a little bland. And I know you don't want to spend a lot of money on dressing, but maybe we could do something with some local landscapers or something, particularly with the building on the east end, the, the one that's just kind of square, to make it a little bit more attractive and maybe more noticeable from the, from the street.
It's funny you should mention that.
Yeah.
Blueville Nursery is one of the local businesses. We get a lot of help from local businesses, as Jared knows, too. And Blueville Nursery has been helping us for years with our lawn, grass, whatever you call it, but also with snow removal, which this last year was absolutely huge. And we have a bit of an issue now with people who want to just drive straight across our parking lot to get to the houses behind, which I've had a number of people say to me, I almost got hit. Especially in the summer, when we have kids going to and fro, we're very concerned about that. So we have spoken to Blueville, and we have a plan, once we have a dry enough spell, for them to dig a trench down the alley and put some, some trees and grasses in there, so.
Good. Yeah. It's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's no music, huh?[1762.01][1762.01][laughter] No music. Well, now we'll hear from Eggieville, and Dennis Cook, I think, is coming up. Ryan, are you and Krista coming, or just, no?
Don't you think they should?
I think they should.
I think they should.
There you go. You can either just hit the spacebar now.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, buddy. We should be about done, shouldn't we? Running a little late. Thanks for putting up with all of this. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. As you said, yeah. I'm Dennis Cook with the Aggieville Business Association. I will probably, you know, and just try to keep it going, basically just read you what our request is, and then we can, we can go through the slides. But the Aggieville Business Association is requesting the city of Manhattan to allocate $60,000 towards our standard operating budget. This is, this equals the amount we requested in 2018 and 2019. Aggieville has shown tremendous improvement this past year, and we continue to strive to be the best shopping district in Manhattan for locals, visitors, and temporary residents. We look forward to presenting, presenting our gains and goals to the commission in June. Now, the ABA has undergone a change in leadership, but we remain focused on our future. Our board consists of our business leaders, and we are excited to launch the new Aggieville Vision projects that we will, that will strengthen our district. We continue to enhance our maintenance programs, bolster our community events, and promote Aggieville to visitors and residents alike. In 2020, we plan to see progress with adding a carefully planned parking solution, part of this redevelopment, more working and living opportunities, continued cleanliness to attract families and community projects that favorably impact the city. Our plans for 2020 will include the advancement of the district in all areas. We believe the continuous and ongoing improvements to Aggieville will help drive economic growth for the region and meet the community's desire for a more vibrant shopping, dining, and entertainment district. So, that's it. No, but we'll run through this. This is our, our current slogan motto, and I think we'll stay with that, is Aggieville, come early and stay late. Aggieville, the shopping district itself is 130 years old, started in 1889, and, and home to over 100 businesses. Our board members and staff, Ryan Bramhall and Krista Bramhall are the president and treasurer. This will list, list the, the board members at large, but you're going to see there's some regular members and some associate members in this. So our associate members are virtually what they were doing in downtown with their friends of. We've had associate members for a lot, a lot of years. Matter of fact, I've been on and off the board for probably 24 of the last 36 years as an associate member. But this lists exactly who our board is right now and our staff. From an event standpoint, we try, twice a year, try to do something with American Red Cross and a blood drive. We have one coming up later on this summer. In March, we are the home of the Aggieville St. Patrick's Day Parade and Fake Patty's Day. We tried to do a golf classic this year that got rained out. We're still looking to reschedule that, that we had planned for in May. We do a, a number of Olympics that people ask us to do, whether they're bar Olympics or pub crawls. But this one is, is one that's just for the general, general population. We're starting to promote that one now. We have that coming up on July 12th. Other events, we are the home for the, the Finnish area for the Homecoming Parade that we connect with the university for this, and we tie that date in with, with the Trick or Treat the Ville. And that's a huge event, where we'll see 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 kids come down into Aggieville. It's, that one's amazing. Then obviously, when we get into December, you have the Mayor's, the Mayor's Parade, the Mayor's Lighted Holiday, you know, you know what that parade is. It's got a great name. There's a window decorating contest, and then we have been the home for the Little Apple New Year's Eve for the last number of years. Going back to the Olympics, we have, we get requests all the time, and I think we get some, we get a lot of help from the chamber through CVB, that as, as a group is wanting to come in and look at, should they, should they bring this convention to Manhattan, or could they go to another place? One of the great things we have to offer them is Aggieville. And they, you know, there's a, there's a real group feel for something like this. And so as those groups come in, you know, we have groups that'll reach out to us, and they've got 100 people or 200 people. And what can we provide? And so we've actually, you know, we have it more organized than we have in the past, where we can explain to them the difference between a pub crawl and an Olympics. And a pub crawl is basically, we're just going to organize up and tell, and divide people up. There's no, there's no way, they might feel like they like, they would like it, but there's no way having 110 people walk around together in Aggieville, walking into the same bar together won't work. You, you can't do that. You have to, you have to separate them out, put them into some sort of rotation so that these bars are expecting people to come in. And so we help them set up with venue coordination, how to get a group schedule, how to put all that together. And then we'll provide guides if necessary. The difference between that and the Olympics is there's events in bars, and those events are always something that has nothing to do with, with alcohol. It's just, it's just an event. Anything from, from, from trivia to throwing darts, shooting pool, whatever, but we set that up for them. We will have somebody in, in the bars, running the games, moving people around, making sure they have an opening and closing ceremony. And, and we've had three since, since the first of March. These are outside groups who have come in to do this. We have a, another one scheduled coming up later on in July. And that group's in the 150-person range. And there's, and we have two or three other requests that we're, that we're dealing with right now. Our strategic objectives for 2020 are the, just really basic four things. Parking, as we've said a million times, if it's, if, you know, no matter what we talk about in Aggieville, if you don't talk about parking, you may have missed it. Parking's the biggest issue we've got, and we finally, it looks like we have something happening with that. Work, living, and, work, living opportunities. We are becoming, you know, what you were here talking about before, more density. We are in that position to, to have more people moving into Aggieville. Cleanliness, that's something we're always working on, and we have a really good program right now. And Aggieville stays very clean. And just the community involvement, trying to do the right things for the community to try to make it, to be a good partner with everybody. On parking, you know, as you know, we are in the design phase of the first of three, the first three of a number of projects right now. And the, the biggest one is the, the addition of a carefully planned parking solution. Right now, we are looking at the, the, the public lot that's next to the rally house, and looking at a four or five-story parking garage, and with the, in the neighborhood of 500 parking stalls. Having a parking is one thing, having the parking solutions the other, about how that's going to work, how we tie that in. But that is going to be a catalyst for a lot of things that happen in Aggieville. On the working of living, you know, new apartment buildings coming in, some, some renovation work that's getting ready to happen. So we've got, we've got things where more density is coming into Aggieville. Cleanliness, we've got, you know, the, the flowers are up. We're, we're working with Parks and Recreation to, to help us out with, in, in the parking lots with, with, with annual flowers. And we're on a, on a program to power washing sidewalks on a regular basis, all sorts of things that we're working on to keep, make sure that Aggieville looks clean. And just the community projects that favorably impact the city, whether that's New Year's Eve, you know, concerts, you know, that with, with Willie up there, that's, that is over homecoming, you know, where you decorate windows and all. Those are the kind of things that we're trying to do for everybody. Everybody knows this one, but this is, something we included in on this was just kind of the Aggieville development timeline. And this is basically what, what Jason had presented on one of the last city meetings that, that was issuing the contracts for Olson. So we are in the summer of 2019, where the design starts on the 12th Street between Moro and Blumenton. The design starts on Laramie Street between North Manhattan and 14th, and also the design work on the, on the parking garage. What's not part of, technically, the Aggieville redevelopment that you have helped us with is the construction should be starting on the hotel any day. You know, we have fences up. We're hoping that construction gets started really quick. We are in contact with the people from RH Johnson, and I, and they were, as of a week ago, were just in the final, they, they said they thought they were in the final stages of signing the contracts with a general contractor to get that hotel started. So that puts us in the spring of 2020, where the assumption would be that we are out of design and we are into the construction phase and everything that, that was in the summer of 2019. So our next thing is the design starts on North Manhattan Project, which, which will run from Triangle Park to Little Moro, and whether that, I mean, Triangle Park and over to Laramie, and hopefully that will tie in a little bit with Little Moro and Triangle Park. Year of 2021 is the design starts on the main drag of, of Aggieville, Moro Street from 11th to North Manhattan. 2022 is the design on 12th Street, Moro to Laramie. 23 is Laramie, and, and then possibly looking at, is there a development, development opportunity at that parking lot south of Kite's? 2024, design on alleys with power lines, et cetera. And then we finish up 2025 on perimeter projects. The only things that are, that are for sure are the, we're in the design project, we're in the design phase now, are the first ones.
I have a quick question about the timeline, and maybe this is a wrong question. On the, for the parking garage, we had the design set in summer 2019. Would, at that design vote, or shortly after that design vote, is that when we would vote on full funding of the construction of the parking garage? Or when does that fall?
So the, the design process is starting. Part of that's a parking management plan. So Jason might have a better idea for a timeline, but.
Sorry, Jason.
Probably fall, I would guess.
I think we'll be towards the end of the year. I think we're going to try to move 12th Street a little quicker to coincide with that hotel construction. As Ron mentioned, the parking management plan's going to take some time, probably by the end of the year, early part of 2020. We'll be at a point where we have that design, at least to a point where we'll have very good estimates and a very good layout before you all, the governing body, to give us feedback if that's appropriate, and then move forward to a point where we can actually bid that project out, probably early 2020.
Okay. That, my question was more or less, when we voted on essentially bidding that whole project out, if that would happen before or after November?
After.
And that's pretty basically the, the things we've got going on. It's, it's important for us, you know, we have a lot of momentum. I think that, I think everybody hopefully feels that, that, that the renovations and the redevelopment in Aggieville really ties in with exactly what the city's trying to do with, with bringing in more people and, and more sustainability. I think it's important for Aggieville to become that premier entertainment district. And, and these are the things that we need for, for a lot of help. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Again and again, the funding request is $60,000?
Yes, it is.
With the, some of the things that are going on, for example, the, the hotel, the apartments across the street.
Mm-hmm.
The development down on North Manhattan Avenue, I think that's still north, it's down across from the.
Across from the Burger King, yeah, across from Laramie.
And then the discussion about some of these other projects to include the parking garage. Are you beginning to see any interest yet from developers on doing other things or building owners and business owners?
Well, what I'm privy to, what I get is, is interest within, within the existing structures that are down there. I have, I've met a couple of times with people from ICT Capital Group out of Wichita, and they are the owners of the, of the building that was Fuzzy Tacos. I have a little better feel for why that happened, the way it did happen, by talking to them, because they took over ownership of that building in September. And they had, they had high interest at that time as replacing their tenant with that. As I've met with them twice, they have got, they're, they've been assuring me that they've got, they're just days away from signing a lease with somebody who's really good and, and established and, and well-respected and wants to get into Aggieville. So that one I know. I've talked to some of the other owners of the businesses that are temporarily empty, and they've said that they're, they've had, they've had opportunities, there's more opportunities coming. So I think we're going to see some of that existing stuff happen. If, if somebody is interested in coming in and developing, I think they're going more directly to the city than, than through us.
And the dusty bookshelf is?
Up and running.
Up and running, yeah.
We are getting some inquiries. And I mean no disrespect by this, but we have a lot of dreamers out there, and there are a lot of folks very interested in Aggieville, but they have very lofty goals and lofty We'll see if any of them materialize, but there's a lot of interest.
Good. So do I.
I've, just two comments. And first one, my opinion might not matter very much, as I might be in my last month on the commission or off the commission by the time we vote on it. But I can tell you that, and you have time to convince me otherwise, but in November, if the sales tax did not pass, I would vote no on a parking garage. And I would put that investment in, of the Tiff District money into things like 12th Street, and the additional improvements that we're making in Aggieville. Because out of everybody I've talked to, no one cares about the parking garage more than they do about all those other developments. And there's these people in the background that everybody tells me, like, well, businesses will rush in, but no one has, no one has presented me any evidence of such. So just know, if I'm in that position, and that sales tax doesn't pass, I'll be voting no on a parking garage. And you have some time to convince me otherwise, or maybe my opinion doesn't matter. Second point was, I do appreciate what we've been able to do in increasing density downtown. I think it's really positive. My only two comments about that are, one, and I don't need an answer right now, I think one of the things that we could do better as we increase density is making sure that it's mixed, kind of mixed level of housing. A lot of what's going up right now is on the high end, which I don't blame developers. If they have the market to do that, why wouldn't they do that? But what incentives or, essentially, what can the city do to make sure that it's not just all high-end that goes up? And the second thing I notice is, I Ubered home on Saturday night from Aggieville, and I decided I was going to take the old Blue Trail, I was going to walk in, go back to Aggieville to pick up my car on Sunday morning. And so I walked down Moro, and I think it's just been a while since I walked down that street. And I know it's a bit out of your district, but the number of just like, straight east of that district, maybe two or three blocks, the number of absolutely dilapidated houses blows my mind a little bit.
Right.
And I know some of that road got pulled further into your district. But again, if the business community has any interest or suggestions on how we could approve that as well, I'd be all ears, because.
So would I, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. There's different parts of, you know, across Blumenton, north, there's been taking out some of those older homes and putting in multi-level, you know, apartment complexes, et cetera. You just haven't really seen it as much, but there's some, if, where you were talking about on Moro, if you go down two blocks.
Yes.
Now, now that they've done it there, it's just, so I don't know.
It's like.
I don't know who owns that, and I don't know whether they're just holding out for a little higher price.
Yeah, you're 100% right. If you go a little bit further down Moro, you see good examples of it.
Yeah.
But directly two or three blocks east, it's.
I would, I would say that's a, that's a, somebody's holding out for a little higher money.
Got it, okay.
That's, that's my guess.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I think, you know, we are definitely going to be seeing a lot more movement there. I did see the fencing there. I visit some of the restaurants that are there. But I see a lot of area for co-working spaces, and we talked about this. I think as young professionals move into that area, most of them don't have offices, so it's just remote, and they're looking for spaces. So some of those things can happen there. And maybe a diversity in restaurants and bars. It seems like there's only one demographic sometimes we're catering to. We have a huge Hispanic population, and whenever there's a salsa night, it's packed, like, you can't even move. But I don't even know if it's there in Aggieville now. It used to be in one of the places, and that place is gone.
It still is. It still is. And, you know, and, and I agree, and I, and after your, your. It still is, and, you know, and I agree, and I, and after years of my conversation, I've talked to a couple of the landlords down there about more workspace type areas, and there is interest in that.
Yeah, I think that would be great for there.
Yeah, so, you know, they're thinking about it and seeing whether that works for them or not.
I think that's what, you want to change that image of just a bar district instead of a more of an entertainment district.
Exactly, that's where we want to go.
Yeah, so, and I think the garage, we'll see how all of that happens. I'm still waiting for the hotel to come up and see what comes from that. Have you had any huge problems with the parking already being fenced off?
Well,
It's summer.
There's probably at least one restaurant that would, that would argue with me, that there has been a bigger hit, more for Cocobolos than anybody else probably. Right now, it's, the hurt isn't so bad because it's summer, and, you know, and business is just a little slower at this time of year, and then you didn't have stampede people coming in town that are looking for places to go. The impact of that, the loss of that parking lot is going to hit us in about 60 days.
Yeah, in the fall. I mean, I go to Cocobolos all the time, and it's a convenience problem. You park at Rowley's or somewhere, it's like a five-minute walk, not even five-minute walk.
Right. Even with that, I had a, I had a meeting last week with Jeff Barnes, who is in charge of parking for Kansas State, for all the parking lots at Kansas State University, and basically, my question to him was, is everybody, you know, the locals kind of know that you can go over to Pete Park in the, in the parking lots that are just east of Beach Museum, and you can do that after 5:00, and you can do it on Saturday, you can do it on Sunday, but it's, but it's not, but it's something that anybody has ever publicly said, you just have to know that. And my, my conversation with Jeff Barnes was, is it okay? Will you, you know, are we stepping on anybody's toes if we talk to some of these businesses and have them promote that? And he said, they're perfectly fine with that, and I saw through social media, Facebook today, that Cocobolos is starting to promote with a map that I'd given them showing those parking lots over there that we have, we have parking available just diagonal across, so they're starting to find other ways to promote that.
It only takes two or three minutes.
Right.
Less than five minutes.
Right. And we've, and we've looked at, you know, alternative, any alternative transportation means, we're looking into, you know, the bicycle rickshaws, the pedicabs, we're looking into anything that's going to help us, because assuming that we're, that we're moving on with parking garage and everything, before we get, before we gain, we'll, we'll lose another 80 stalls, and we've got to figure out how to, how to handle that. So, we're working on alternatives right now.
I think there's options. We certainly want to see the Aggieville business area thriving, so
Yes.
We will do what we can in that area, but also getting innovative, diverse business establishments coming in would be great.
We agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things you might consider, I took a couple pictures and was interested in that little electric dash van that they were using for, you know, the Taste of Downtown a couple of weeks ago, and maybe trying to expand that with, you know, Little Apple Bikes would help you get past that, because we got a parking garage sitting down here next to the Elton.
Well, you know
And I know that's a ways from Aggieville, but, you know, if you, if you got a free little electric van that'll drive people back and forth, I think, you know, you can make use of some of that, and that'll get over the, the building problem that is going to constrain business a little bit.
And we have met with them on that, because when, when that vehicle got started, it does include Aggieville. It comes all the way to Aggieville, and so we have made some attempts to, on weekends, to drive downtown, park downtown, catch the dash, we're calling it the Dashmobile, but, you know, the dash van, and having it take us right up into Aggieville and drop us off at bars or restaurants so people can see it. We're trying to help them promote it. And matter of fact, I've got a meeting with Ward Morgan tomorrow, and we're going to talk about some other things. So, we are, we are not sitting still. We're going to explore what we can.
All right. Thanks, Dennis, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bernie?
Mayor, I have absolutely nothing else.
Okay. All right. There being no further business, we'll stand adjourned.
Can I make one other comment, though?
Absolutely.
Because you were talking about, you know, cutting this by, you know, at least one mil, and the information I've absorbed here tonight, because nobody's mentioned how we're going to fund all this, and in the past, we funded DMI and the Business District and MAC and the Wolf House through the transient guest tax. So, I assume we'll continue to do that. Now, I suggested months ago that if we fund the MPO and ATA through economic development, which I think is appropriate, then that plus the personnel buffer and the RCPD, if we drop it to 79,000 in that delinquency fund, you're pretty close to a mil. Right there, but before Ron has to chop anything really critically. So, so I would suggest, you know, I would like the commission to look at that, because I think that is a reasonable way to approach this. Otherwise, we're not going to get a handle on this mil levy.
So, you maybe make one of the options, do that?
We can do that, and obviously, we have good balances in economic development. The risk comes later when that fund doesn't get renewed. If it doesn't, then you're funding something that's on a revenue source that may end. So, but we're a ways from that, so it's something that can be revisited from year to year.
Yeah, my assumption is, you know, if we, once we put that back on the ballot a couple of years from now, and it includes the Potawatomi County side of the city, which is not part of the Economic Development Fund tax collection right now, I think people will see that it's quite valuable to renew that, and so I'm not concerned really about that going away, but it is something to think about.
Could Ron speak a minute about Tuttle Creek rising again? And I know it's not on the agenda, but it's on my mind, which is why I ask.
I printed the charts out just in case.
Okay.
And if you look at your radar, we're probably going to give you a warning here before, within the half hour, an hour.
I know where it went off.
Big stuff coming down from Nebraska, which means the watershed's going to get full again, but we're, as of this morning's report, we're at 11:32.39. I'm sure we're probably another half, half foot higher than that. So, we are meeting tomorrow, our EOC group will start that and determine how often we have to meet, and talking about, and Scott can help me here, but we, I know we're re-equipping the temporary EOC at the headquarters fire station and starting that process, so we're watching it close. You know, I was, I told somebody else earlier today that tonight's rain's going to have a major impact. Forecast after that looks pretty good, but Milford's awful close as well. They're within less than two feet from their spillway, so this, this is probably going to have an impact, because it's all the way, it's a, it's a big wide span all the way over to Concordia, so, and moving, moving this way. It was real slow in Nebraska, it just kept building and didn't move, so we'll see what happens. We're ready to ramp back up again. I know Rob, Rob left early, but the crews worked hard over the weekend to pump the, close the, close the gate and the levee down. We still probably have a little bit of water coming down the river. The Smoky Hill almost had a record crest at New Cambria, just east of Salina, so that'll impact some of that, and so will this. They were forecasted to go, I think, up to 5,000 tomorrow, 8,000 the next day, 10,000 the next two days here at Tuttle, but whether or not they're able to do that, they had to shut it down substantially, because the Kansas was out of its banks from Lawrence to Kansas City, so.
But there's a lot more than that coming into Tuttle Creek.
There was, it had slowed down. The inbound was 10,100 this morning, which was a lot lower. The day before, I think it was 40, 38, almost 40, so
We can't
This'll start it again.
We can't keep up because of the other rivers.
The river's been actually falling, the Kansas has, but still kind of at our action stage, and our gates are still closed, but we've still got pumps set, so if we do get a big rain inside, which is, looks like we will, hopefully we can get that pumped out, just kind of depends on how quick it comes, and this'll, this'll probably depend on what happens, give us, walk hats about back down to normal, but it'll be up again. So, we got right to the edge there Saturday night, Sunday morning, so.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you. Who's that guy, new guy in the end there?